Hmm.
Hey Marco, did you need the list of the speakers from the last meeting or do you have a copy of it?
I still have a copy.
Okay.
I'm just going to reference to that.
Okay.
I think I'll be fine. Okay, quick thumbs up, everybody ready? Excellent, okay, so. The time being six o'clock, I called to order the City Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This is a regular meeting again, but it is part two. From continued hearing or meeting from last Tuesday, it is May 5th, 2020. And before we get into. Our agenda items, I just want to. Remind everybody that wants to. Be part of this meeting or people that are watching us in Channel 10. The webinar ID is eight five four seven zero eight five eight seven eight five. If you'd like to join in and you will be put on the attendee list. And maybe you can speak or comment on one of the items if you're interested. Also, a good phone number if you want to join in by phone and not via video Zoom. Is one three four six two four eight seven seven nine. Also, you can watch us on Channel 10, I think. From what I understand, so with that said, Catherine, would you please take a roll call?
Then.
Here.
Siperly.
Here.
Shaktar.
Attendees can now hear you speak. This meeting is being recorded.
Shaktar.
Here, 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 here.
Grosskup.
Here, thank you.
Saber.
Here, sir.
Whissing.
Here.
Russo.
As in.
That was it, that was seven, excellent, thank you Catherine. Moving on to item number three on the agenda tonight, and that is a continued hearing from last Tuesday. It was the receipt of the minutes from the February 25th. Meeting, and I think we had some changes. That Commissioner Grosskup. Asked for, and I wonder if they were made. And. Well, let's do this, I guess I'm entertaining a motion to receive those minutes.
Marco, so moved, thank you, my changes were made, thank you.
Okay, excellent, we have a motion to receive the minutes. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, motion and second, any discussion on the minutes? No, then Catherine, I'll call for the vote.
Saber.
Upstate.
Whissing.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Grosskup.
Yes.
Shaktar.
Upstate.
Siperly.
Yes.
Dem.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you Catherine, and just to let Alyssa know, I had some sort of a little feedback going on. I don't know, it went away now, but might have been an audio thing. Let's see, moving on, item number four on the agenda tonight are. Comments from citizens that are appearing in front of us for items that are not on the agenda. So. Nothing to do with the continued items. And if you're an attendee and you want to speak, this is in general. By the way, I see none for for items that are not on the agenda, but if you want to speak, you need to raise your hand. And a little flag goes up for us and we can let you in, same goes for the commissioners, if you have something to say, please raise your hand. Also, let's see, that was item number four, also last time, we didn't get to see. Item 11 dash 20, and I said, we're going to put this on top of the pile. So at this point, we are hearing a new item. It is item 11 dash 20, consideration of various amendments to the municipal code. Title 070, sections 070, 030, 070, 040, and 070, 070. And I think that's Gretchen, from what I remember.
Correct Marco, and I'm going to just bear with me for a moment, I'm going to share my screen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So. What we have are, actually, we have a much longer list of code amendments that we will bring to you at a later time. We're bringing forward a shorter priority list for your consideration at this time. These items, these are items that need immediate attention or that are fairly easy corrections, there are 13 of them. And I'm going to skip over all of the simple corrections and focus just on the more substant- substantive issues. And the first is. Hold on a moment. There we go. The first is in the table of allowed land uses here on the screen, it's item number two. We have found that the code does not have a category for small limited type manufacturing uses such as. Cabinet shops, blacksmith shops, recreation equipment manufacturers. And so currently, these. Types of uses would fall under a much larger manufacturing and production type category there, which really doesn't fit well. So the prior code had a specific land use category for things like blacksmith shop, cabinet shop, like I said. So we are lumping all of those into a category that we would like to call craft manufacturing. And that is defined here in red on your screen. As an indoor facility for the assembly of hand fabricated parts or hand fabrication of custom. Or craft products using predominantly hand tools, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's a short list of examples that are, but it's not exclusive to these, to these types of uses. And we propose adding that to all of the commercial and industrial categories here, and I'm going to jump to the next page, there you see. All of the, like I said, commercial and industrial zones, it does not include the institutional zone, which is the last, last one in that chart. So, moving on. The next change is in the backyards, backyard chicken category. These are accessory uses and structures that categorized as that. We did not. Include those as an allowed use in planned unit developments. And so we want to change that to allow them in PUDs unless they're specifically identified as a prohibited use in that PUD. The next one. Is out to the landscaping and screening, in fact, fencing section, now if you recall. We have kind of an over the top. Requirement for perennials and shrubs, as you all know from recent past development proposals. The requirement is far too high. There's also an issue that we found in the percentage of landscaping required in industrial zones. It's actually greater than in the. In some of the commercial zone districts, so you'll see that in the I1 and I2. Zone districts, we require 20% of the, of the site to be landscaped, but. 15% in a couple of the commercial categories and 10% in the, in the resort category. So what we propose to do is actually go back to the old code requirement, which. We have. Not, back when, in underneath the old, under the old code. We didn't have a lot of complaints from developers about the requirements for shrubs and perennials. We felt, and they did, that it was achievable. And so that's what we proposed to do is go back to the old, old code requirements, and we also then needed to, wanted to correct the. The percentages in the I1 and the I2 to reduce those, and the result actually is. A comparison table, which I'm going to flip to here. These. This compares a couple of the recent developments, it shows you the current code requirement of the shrubs and perennials, you'll see 854 for one development and over 3,000 for. Another, which is just craziness. The old code, it would have been 85 and 165 for those two developments, and then with the recommended amendments, that brings it right in line with the, the old code requirements. The next proposed change is also in the landscaping and screening and fencing section. We've found that. What we are proposing is that an amendment to allow chain link fencing. In front inside yards in the industrial zone districts. And with the caveat that. Plant, plants be added to the base of the fences when they're adjacent to a public right of way. And that plant material needs to provide a dense screen. The next requirement, I'm actually going to skip over here, item number seven, and leave that to the last. That's a clarification. Number nine. This is an. It not only corrects some paragraph formatting that was incorrect. But it also suggests changing the storage requirements for multifamily developments. Currently, the code requires 100 square feet per unit. Which has been seen as by most developers is very problematic. We are suggesting following a Carbondale model. In that it, it measures by the cubic foot. So that requirement is, we're proposing is to require. A minimum of one cubic foot of enclosed storage space per three square feet of gross floor area per unit. And. I have an example, so in, underneath the, the current code. A. 100 square feet per unit obviously is 10 foot by 10 foot area. And I'm assuming eight foot tall ceiling, so that actually equals 800 cubic feet of storage requirement. So, under this proposal, the amendment, the proposed amendment. Say, for example, we have a 750 square foot apartment. This new requirement would. Be roughly, would require roughly 250 cubic feet for that 750 square foot apartment. That is roughly a five and a half by five and a half foot room with an eight foot tall ceiling. Conversely, a larger 1,200 square foot apartment, under this new proposed requirement would require about 400 cubic feet of storage space, and that's roughly. A five foot by 10 foot room with an eight foot ceiling. And, let's see. Oh, yes, this next one, signage, got a couple of proposed changes to the sign code. This first one addresses signs that are not actually, signs on properties that are not actually visible from a public right of way. We propose adding a. A non-visible signs to the list of signs that do not require a permit, so in other words, for the larger. Complexes, the larger developments in the city, for example, say the hot springs pool. Iron Mountain Hot Springs, or even the hospital, if they have signs that are internal to the development that are not visible from the public right of way. We are proposing that they, they do not have to apply for a sign permit application. The next one is actually something that we proposed striking from the code. And this is from a recommendation or request from a council meeting that was back in February, I think it was. We have a, an allowance in the code for these electronic message signs. And we have received a number of complaints on the two electronic message signs that we have in town, and council. Has requested that you all consider striking that from the code. Okay, this, this last one here, item 13, just adds the definition of craft manufacturing to the definition, definition section of the code. And lastly. The. We propose changes to parking lot landscaping. In the recent past, we've reviewed a few developments that have requested to put in. Bio swales or rain gardens, tree diamonds and peninsulas, instead of. Having to put in one landscape island every eight parking spaces. So the idea is still to require the same number, the same number of trees at a rate of, of one tree per eight parking spaces. But allow them in different configurations, so this just. Provides an allowance for people to put in bio swales. Like I said, tree diamonds and rain gardens. So those are the proposed changes to the code, and I will take any questions that you may have.
Excellent, thank you Gretchen.
One quick question. Marco, would you like me to keep this up on the screen, or do you want me to stop sharing my screen?
Maybe, maybe we'll keep it up for a minute in case we need to like flip through it and see. The one referred to, just, just in case for a minute or so. Thanks Gretchen, back to the commission for questions to staff at this point. And we're going to start with Commissioner Russo, please.
Thank you so much Gretchen for all that, the time and energy that went into that. Regarding the electronic signs, in the event that we do strike that from code. How does that apply to the two existing electronic signs that are currently up? Are they grandfathered in?
Yes, they would be, they would be considered as legal, non-conforming. They would have to come into conformance with the code and otherwise, in other words, be removed when they would propose or, you know, reconfigure the sign. Make it bigger, make it smaller, do something structurally.
Yeah.
Okay, and then they would have to eliminate them.
Okay, very good, and currently, those two electronic signs, is it your understanding that they are in compliance? Currently with the existing sign code regarding electronic signs?
That's actually part of the problem, you'll see in this stricken section, it says lighting from the message. Shall not exceed 3,000 nits, who's candela's per square meter. It's been difficult for us to achieve compliance in that regard because. Of, you know, management. You know, they can, they can increase the light level of these signs. Very easily, and so it's, that part of it's been difficult to reach compliance.
So, currently, the ones that are installed, do you have, is there any, any ability? With code enforcement to take them out, or as long as they're, they're following the existing rules, they'll continue to be able to be used, like, where, where are they exactly?
So they, yes, we can enforce.
Okay.
And there has been another issue I forgot to mention with the moving and flashing component of this. So they can't, they can't change the, the display much more than. Well, it says here, the minimum hold time. Right up in here. The message and our display, so we've had trouble reaching compliance on that as well, but yeah, we can, we can continue, and I'm sure we will continue to have to enforce on or remind. These, these folks that they need to comply with the code. And there would be. A process in order to have these signs removed if we can't reach compliance, or cite, cite the, the people, and this. The amount of the citation is fairly hefty.
What is that?
I think it could be up to $1,000 per day. Day that they're not in compliance.
And have they been issued any citations at this point, or has there just been kind of subtle conversations?
I think at this point. I think we have sent a couple of. Certified letters, but it hasn't reached the. You know, the end process of, of us appearing in court.
Okay, perfect, thank you Gretchen for clarity on that.
Thank you, Ingrid, before going to another commissioner, just real quick, I'm just curious, I know where one sign is, but not the other, I know the one near 19th Street.
The other is on Highway 6.
Trying to recall, I'm not recalling at all.
It would be Culvers, Marco.
Oh, okay, all right, they have one of those, okay, thank you Gretchen, Commissioner Siperly, please.
Thanks Gretchen and Marco, my question was regarding item 6, the chain link fence. Okay, and I guess I was wondering if we should clarify how close to the fence this proposed dense vegetation needs to be. And also whether, like which side of the fence it could be on, like, do we see the fence and maybe 10 feet behind that is the dense planting, in which case we're really still looking at the fence?
That's actually a good clarification. Yep, clearly, I think the intent is to have the plants on the. Roadside of the, of the fence.
And if it is, it doesn't really matter how far back the fence is in that case.
That's true. Okay, all right, I can. I can make that change.
Just a quick follow-up question on that, I'm just gonna do the follow-up thing if I think of it and it fits. Can you put your chain link fence on your property line and use the. If there's a planting strip or a right of way to put the. Screening in, or does it have to be on your property?
Of, the chain link fence could be placed on the property line. And right now, these requirements don't specify as to whether or not the dense screen is on the. In the right of way. Or could, could or could not be in the right of way, normally, normally, so if the, the fence is on the property line, you would then also have a sidewalk next to that. And then a five foot wide planting strip next to that. I mean, that's generally what the code would require.
Right, but that's probably not where you want your screening.
No, no, so I think that the fence needs to be offset from the property line by. You know, five feet or six feet or 10 feet so that you could put that dense, dense screen.
If the dense screening is required.
Right.
Right. Maybe something to add, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, no, that's a good clarification.
Okay, sorry to jump in, but Commissioner Grosskup, please.
Okay, thanks Marco and Gretchen, I'm just on this number seven with the chain link. Gretchen, what's the rationale here for this, it's basically allowing the use in two districts. But so far, as long as it has the dense screen.
Right. The rationale is that in industrial zones, there's a lesser standard, shall we say, for. For landscaping and. It's the way that the industrial, industrial uses use the property, it's come up a couple of times in the recent past with developments. And it was something that I thought that we should consider reducing. The requirement to allow them to, to use chain link.
And I'm definitely not opposed to it, I guess I'm just wanting to ask for that clarification, given. I don't know when it was, but not too long ago, city application on to.
Yeah, it was on Deveraux. There was another one along Deveraux. That was also. We received some feedback from the developer on that one, there's, you know, there's industrial zone districts down by the airport too. So we were considering that as well, usually there. Like I said, it's just, just the way that the, the uses. Use their properties. And we thought a lesser standard might. I don't know, might, might be better for them.
Okay. I have two other questions, one is if you can define bio swale, and then. The other one was on number 10 around the. Oh gosh, let me get down there, signs, and essentially. so that would allow the freedom to do it internal to a campus or, you know, the private industries area. But do we have any lighting standards that would still apply to those particular signs?
No, that's actually a really good question. I need to take a look to see if sign lighting is still in the lighting section of the code or if it's in the sign section of the code. So, I will do that, Catherine, and then you had another, there was a two-part question. I already forgot the first part.
So, let me go. It was about bio swell, if you could just.
Okay, let's, so a bio swell is, or rain garden is actually, is a depression. So if you recall, Valley View Hospital had a couple of proposed or parking, surface parking lots that we recently reviewed. And their proposal was to have these bio swells or rain gardens and they're essentially depressions in the, in the parking lot that would capture the runoff. And these are, they actually, they're lands, heavily landscaped. And the idea is that they cleanse and purify, or not purify, but they cleanse the, the water before it's released into the city's storm drain system. And I think this is a, a good opportunity for me to tell you that I should add a, or find, find and add definitions of bio swells or rain gardens and add them to the definition section. Because I think there's some pretty good ones that are available.
Just, just one more little thing. So it says, or alternative method that achieves the result of shading. But it's really more of breaking up that endless sea of parking. So I guess I was a little bit confused about the shading word.
Yeah, I thought that the intent was to, of the one landscape aisle every eight parking spaces, you're right. The intent is to break up the sea of parking. I also felt that the issue was providing shade to the, to the whole parking lot. So that language, I thought got me there, but maybe it doesn't.
I'm going to defer to the city to know what it means. So thanks.
Maybe, maybe I should work on it to clarify.
Okay, thank you Catherine and Commissioner Wissing, please.
Sorry, God, I'm the weakest link. Okay. I had one question Gretchen about the craft manufacturing section.
Okay.
And just to, just that I, but that, would we ever have an instance where a craft manufacturing situation would be in a mixed-use or residential zone? I'm thinking with like the examples of like a clock worker. Like, would you work on clocks in your basement or in your garage or something?
I think we can handle that through a home occupation permit. If there is limited amount, a number of people that come to the home, then it wouldn't kick in to be manufacturing. That's more like repair. I mean, in, in that particular example. So my, my answer to you is no, craft manufacturing wouldn't be allowed in a residential zone district. This is a little bit more intensive than say a clock, someone repairing clocks in their basement. This would be some level of fabrication associated with it.
Okay.
Well, doesn't sound like it answered your question.
No, I think that you did answer. I just didn't know what the application, like if it would need to be with these examples, a broader. Up, you answered my question.
Yeah, so I do see that there's, there's makers of clock. To me, that's more of a, you're actually changing, you're, you're bringing in a raw material and you're, you're changing it to something else as opposed to somebody who's repairing.
So you're saying though, let's say I wanted to be a clockmaker in my basement, another part of the code would address that?
No, if you wanted to actually make a clock, I think that this, you would fall under this craft manufacturing. And this is intended not for me making one clock in my basement. This is more intended for something more substantial than that. You're actually producing some volume of clocks. And clearly, this definition doesn't get me there. So maybe that is something that I need to look at amending as well. Because that is a good question that you had, Amber.
That was it. That was just, that was, that was where my thoughts were going is if.
No, that's fair. That is fair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wissing. Just real quick, would, would it help if we addressed this in all the zones? Such as not permitted special use, whatever, whatever we seem fit or what, what you guys seem fit?
Yeah, I don't, I have concerns about that.
Okay.
There are other sections of the code that talk about home-based type, home-based businesses, you know, which limit the number of people that could come to your house. Limit the number of deliveries that you receive.
And uses, I think, right?
Yeah, yes. So I think allowing these in all of the zone districts would be problematic.
I didn't say allow them. I just say, I'm just saying that list the zone district as not allowed.
Oh, oh, I see. Yeah, so.
In the same table and says, you know, no, you can't really do it in a, in a, in a commercial or, I guess commercial is fine, but residential you can't do it.
Right, so in our table, if there's a blank in the, the box, it's not allowed.
Is there a letter for that?
No, it's, it's a white box.
Okay, fair enough. Maybe something to think about though.
Okay.
Commissioner Schaefer, please. Schaefer, sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. Actually, Commissioner Grosskopf asked the question. It was the other, in addition to the bio swell and rain garden, I'm wondering, what can you define a tree diamond?
Tree diamond. It's just a modification of a tree island. Or landscape island is just a different shape. And nor, a lot of times, you'll see one at the head of, say, four parking spaces. You know, had, you've got two parking spaces that head into each other and then there'll, there'll be a little tree, tree island there. They call them tree diamonds.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it was, clarified most of it with Catherine's answer. Thanks.
Thank you, George, and Commissioner Shacter, please.
Thank you. Gretchen, a quick question on the storage requirement. And maybe I just didn't read carefully, are, when you're calculating, you took, you didn't, you didn't count kitchen storage and closets? Some, are stairways excluded from the calculation as well?
Oh, you mean like storage under stairs?
No, well, I mean, when you're, when you're calculating gross square footage or grow, that's part of the calculation. Do stairways count in gross? Which would actually.
Well, yeah, yeah, they would.
But that actually theoretically lowers the amount of storage necessary. Is that correct?
Right. I mean, that would be the distinction between floor area, our definition of floor area and gross floor area. So floor area would take out things like utility areas, bathrooms, everything that you, garage space, everything that you would consider is quote, non-habitable. Gross floor area is, we calculate everything from wall to wall.
Okay, all right. And the staff feels this is adequate and fair to both occupants and, and developers?
Well, we tried it out on a couple of, of proposed developments and they seem to, the developers seemed to think it was fair. You know, I have a feeling that we will probably be revisiting this again. It's just something to propose at this point.
Okay, all right. Question on the parking, I think you, I think you've covered it. But with these new definitions and requirements are, are planted space versus pavement, pavement remain same as the existing code? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then again, on the new craft businesses, while it's not specified, if somebody had since so much of it seemed to refer to hand, three, 3D printing would also be potentially allowed under this new proposal?
Interesting. Yes, oops, sorry. I think the answer is yes.
Okay, all right.
Include that.
I don't know if that falls under domestic scaled mechanical or other equipment, but.
Yeah. I, I think I can, giving the ramp up of 3D printing use, I think I can add that as an example.
All right. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman and Gretchen, thank you.
Commissioner Shacter and on to Commissioners Ziperly, please.
Sorry, I had neglected to ask a second question. And this one is in the parking table at the very end of this packet about terminus islands. I see non-living ground cover shall not exceed 50% of the required landscaping area. Right, so a landscaping area isn't necessarily plant cover then? Are we saying this could be pavers or gravel or something and still be called landscape?
Not usually. Let me see, non-living, yeah, shall not exceed 50%. So, right, they, you could have 50% of that island be non, it could be pavers, it could be gravel, it could be rock.
Is there some suggestion that that non-living ground cover is permeable?
No, there is no suggestion. It's silent on that.
So pavement could be a non-living ground cover?
Yes.
I, I, I don't, that's not really our intent, is it?
I think it was, is consistent with the way the old code read. I added, just for clarification, in this terminus islands area, I added that to be consistent with a, an example or a section up here opposite the single-loaded parking space A. Yeah, so I just wanted to, to add that back down, down there. So this has actually been a part of our code for as long as I've, I mean, is a part of the old code and we just transferred it to the new code.
So I, I understand why you would want to add it to terminus island, but I wonder if we should put that back on our big list of more major things to address down the road?
Sure.
Because somebody, yeah, I wouldn't want that to be interpreted as you could just pave it and call it a landscape area.
Yeah, and I, I think unfortunately, it's been my experience that we have run into that in the past. That they have, that, you know, these tree islands have been 50% pavement.
Or, or something about the permeability of whatever ground cover might, might suffice.
Okay, yeah, I can add that as a discussion topic.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And I see no more questions from the commission. Just a couple of things to clarify. For me, the storage, Gretchen, it says you can overbuild your garage and have storage in front of the vehicles. You can also have it to the side, right? It doesn't matter as long as you overbuild.
You're right, it doesn't matter.
Okay, but you cannot count the actual garage, the actual parking spot in the garage. You cannot.
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. And the other one, I think that was it, the other one was answered. It was with the parking island, the rain, whatever it was called.
Bio swell, okay.
That's it. I wasn't quite sure what that was, so.
I will add it to the shore.
Thanks Gretchen.
Sure.
For your presentation. Bringing it back, no, actually I need to open the public comments on this. Do I?
Yes.
Yes, I do. Okay, thank you, because I thought it was internal, but we're going to do this. So I'm opening the public portion.
Oh, I will stop sharing my screen now.
Okay, that'll work. Thank you. Opening public comment section for this item. If anybody would like to speak up on the code amendments, please raise your hand. And I will see none. Thank you. I'll close the public comment section of this hearing and bring it back to the commission for a motion and item 11-20, consideration of various amendments to the municipal code title 070, sections, section.
Marco, so moved with all the discussion included.
Move to.
To approve, yeah.
To approve, okay. Thank you, with everything we have. And a second? Excellent, thank you. Any discussion on the code amendments? Commissioners, raise your hands. I see none. I just have to ask you guys a question. I was wondering, do you guys feel comfortable moving this along or do you think we need to see this again? To see all the changes that we kind of asked of Gretchen?
Is it, can I ask a quick question then?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. I know that she mentioned that there'll be a follow-up meeting where we'll also discuss amendments, that these were the more time-sensitive ones. And if we make the amendment on these, in the event that we need to revise anything, we would have that opportunity in future again, would we not?
Jen is nodding, so I assume yes.
Great.
Okay, so, so we all feel comfortable moving forward or at least the person that made the motion and seconded feels comfortable moving forward with what we have and what the direction we gave to staff. Yeah. Okay, I see no more discussion. So Catherine, I'll call for the question.
Wissing? Yes. Wusso?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Grosskopf?
Yes.
Ziperly?
Yes.
Dem?
Yes.
Shacter?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Excellent, thank you Catherine. Thanks Gretchen. We'll be looking forward to the next round of amendments.
No, you won't.
Yeah, we will. I think we do.
There are, there are quite a few.
Right. Um, let's see, item six in tonight's agenda is the first continued hearing from last week's part one of our meeting. And it is item 07-20, consideration of a request to rezone a parcel from RH Residential Identity to MK. from RH residential identity to M2 mixed use commercial central core zone district. And from what I remember, I guess I don't remember, is this Trent or is it Gretchen?
Actually, it's me. Gretchen, um, and I am reporting that I received no written public comment on this item.
No written public comment on this item. Thank you Gretchen for letting us know. We did say we are gonna open the, well, continue the public comment section for a little bit longer, so at this point, I'm asking the public to comment on item 07-20 on the rezoning. If anybody's here to make a comment, please raise your hand. And we'll see none, so I officially close the public portion of this hearing, and I'll bring it back to the Commission, and I'm entertaining, I gotta find the right people to work here, this. I'm entertaining a motion in item 07-20, consideration of a request to rezone a parcel from RH to M2 in the Glenwood Meadows.
Marco, before you do that, could we just make sure that if there's anybody on the phone who wanted to raise their hand, I think it's star nine, is that right, Alyssa?
That is correct, star nine.
That'll work. I have four, I see four phone numbers. If any of you would like to comment on item 07-20, please let me know. I'll see none, thank you. At this point, we're closed with comments, and I'll bring it back to the Commission. Thank you Jen for letting me know. Entertaining a motion.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll move with finding item 07-20, a request for a zoning change from RH to M2, as stated in the staff report. And with the findings on page eight and the conditions on page eight, I would move to approve.
Okay, thank you Commissioners Schacter, we have a motion to approve item 720, and Commissioner Schacter, a second. Any discussion on this rezoning? Please raise your hand, Commissioners. And I'll see none, then Catherine, I'll call for the question.
Sipperly?
Yes.
Dem?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Gross Cup?
Yes.
Missing?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you Catherine, and thanks Commissioners and Gretchen. Our next item tonight is 6B, is item 04-20, consideration of a major site architectural plan review, rezoning from RH residential high density to RT residential transitional and variance applications for the construction of 100 multifamily apartment units in six buildings and approximately 5.8 acres. And that is Trent. From what I remember, so Trent, please.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners and all the folks who are in attendance with us this evening. There, do want to point out to you that there were a couple of items that were added to your packet as attachments that were following up to some of the questions and comments that we heard, both from the public and or the Planning and Zoning Commission last Tuesday night. And I did want to share those with you just briefly. Share my screen and let me know when you can see it. So one of the, the questions that was asked by the Planning and Zoning Commission, if I remember correctly, was the potential for providing for electric vehicle charging stations, and the applicant did provide us with a site plan that showed a couple of options there in the main parking lot as well as parking lot C. And I'm actually gonna leave this overall site plan up because it kind of helps you relate the pictures on the right hand side of the screen, which there was a lot of questions in regards to the, the elevations and or the grades that faced the, some of the adjacent property owners, specifically the Oakhurst Town Homes. And the applicant has provided in your packet a couple of different section view drawings that would show the proposed rock walls as well as the landscaping and the elevation difference between the existing Oakhurst Town Homes and the proposed buildings as well as the parking lots. This specific example on page one is showing one of the main parking lot, I believe, and, I'm sorry, the north parking lot, and the addition of one of the things discussed, if you can see my cursor moving, there would be a four foot tall solid wood fence that would potentially block lights as well as the adjacent retaining walls and landscaping buffer between those two properties. And then again, they've done that for the building, I believe it is F, that is adjacent to Oakhurst, the only building that's adjacent to the, that existing development. And then again, for the main lot showing some of those. I know that staff is planning to share with you all of the public comments that we have received for this application. I think the, the applicant would also potentially like to address some of the comments and the questions that they heard. I don't know what the best point to do that this evening is, it may be following public comment, or it may be at this time. I guess that would be at your pleasure.
All right, thank you Trent, for the update. Did you, well, I think since we're, since we already heard public comment last time, and since we're still in the open public comment section, did you, do you have any written public comments you'd like to read into the record?
Well, and, and I did want to point out that I added the new comments received towards the end of last week when we posted the agenda, but I have revised that document in your, in your packet on Civic Clerk as well, so that should be all inclusive of the comments that we received, both prior to last week's meeting, as well as to, until last Friday, and then up until approximately 4:30 today.
So.
That covered.
Updated very recently.
Yes, it's 4:30, 4:30 today. No, actually, after that, 5, 5:15ish.
5:15, okay, excellent. So all those are in the packet and available for everyone to read. Um, so at this point, we'll move over to the attendees. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak or comment. I would like to appeal to you that please don't repeat what you said last week. If you have additional comments, we'd love to hear them. We already spent quite a bit of time last week to, to listen to all your valuable input, but please try not to be redundant and, and let us hear your additional comments.
But before we start, can I ask the question? I thought we were going to read the comments into the record, so you guys could all hear them.
We, we are going to read this into the record, and I did wonder if we should do that before you take the live public comment. But could be after.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that Marco, you are aware we were doing that.
I did not know. I thought having them in the packet was good enough.
We want to be, we want to err on the side of making sure everybody hears them, and it's as if the people making the comments were there present, talking to you.
That sounds good to me, so, um, let's do them now.
And I, I think just to, to let you know the plan here, Jen, myself, and Gretchen are gonna take turns reading some of these comments, and it may take some time, so please bear with us. And thank you for your patience.
I will set my microphone on mute, and you guys.
Okay, I guess I'll go ahead and start. This initial comment is from Carol Turtle. On April 28th, 2020, Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission will consider the application for proposed major development of 100 apartments and six buildings located south of Oakhurst Town Homes and north of Walmart on Blake Avenue. The hillside location sits above the Bus Rapid Transit Station in South Glenwood. If they have not already done so, I suggest the P&amp;Z Commission and City Council members visit the proposed site, more importantly, visit the surrounding neighborhoods of Blake and Palmer Avenues. These two streets will serve as major access roads into the development from South Glenwood. Blake and Palmer Avenues are both substandard streets with improper drainage and no sidewalks. Both streets are totally inadequate to handle the traffic they have now, let alone taking on the increase of traffic generated by 100 apartments while providing no safe passage for children to access schools and parks. I hope our P&amp;Z Commission will deny approval of this major development application until our city can address the inadequate roads with its lack of sidewalks on the Blake and Palmer Avenues. David Tuttle, Glenwood Springs, Turtle, Glenwood Springs.
We didn't really have a plan between the three of us, so I guess I'll jump in on this one, Trent. And let's see, it says, dear planning and zoning, my name is Lisa Menzano. I have lived in Glenwood Springs since 1976. My current residence for the past 16 years is 23rd and Palmer. The stop sign sits on my property during construction on the Grand Avenue Bridge. Sorry, this is handwritten, with the rerouting of traffic. 90% of the cars did not stop. Dangerous, maybe a lawsuit next time. My neighborhood has changed with many young families, lots of small children playing outside, kickball, walking, riding bikes. The proposed Bell Rippey development in the past was single family homes, and now it has turned into multifamily condos. The project is simply too big, too many people, too many cars. Please consider a smaller scale of a project. In a perfect world, we would love open space. Thank you for your time. Signed, Lisa Menzano.
So this is from Christine Smalley, and it's from April 26th. Dear Ms. Ricehill, this is, yeah, Ms. Ricehill, my name is Christine Smalley, a high school social studies teacher, mother of two and resident of Palmer Avenue. I write to you today to express my concern over the Bell Rippey development by Walmart. They plan to have two bedroom apartments with only 1.5 spots available per apartment. This is unrealistic, as almost every family that needs two bedrooms has two cars. With high cost of housing, people will certainly be having roommates. Again, a situation that would have two cars. The neighborhood does not have the space or the road conditions to allow for overflow parking. Additionally, there are many children in the neighborhood riding bikes and families walking. Without sidewalks, they are in the street and already in an unsafe condition. Additional traffic through this area is scary for all residents and our children. I'm not opposed to the development, but it needs to come with sidewalks and safety precautions for those in the neighborhood around it. Successful city planning requires thoughtful consideration for impacts of developments beyond the confines of the parking lot. City Council must consider the overall effects that a development will have on the area as a whole. If you have not walked through these areas, you need to, and please do so with your fellow council members, consider discussing these concerns with Paula Step, who walks the neighborhood regularly. You need to see people pushing their strollers and kids trying to navigate the already potholed streets on their training wheels. You too would feel the concern that our neighborhood has. Thank you for your time. Christine Smalley, Glenwood Springs High School Social Studies Teacher.
Our next comment was received on Monday, April 27th, from Janet and Richard O'Connell, Attention Planning and Zoning Commission, we own a multi generational home at 2409 Palmer Avenue. We are concerned that the existing roads do not support the existing Oakhurst Town Homes, and the new Bell Rippey development will make a bad situation worse. We are also concerned that the Bell Rippey development will end up with non residential parking and increased traffic on the developed portion of Palmer Avenue. Blake Street has no sidewalks and always has cars and trucks parked on the east side of the street. 26th Street is worse, with a high grade, poor condition, no sidewalk, and cars always parked on the north side of the street. The opening of the Blake Avenue Gate by Walmart will also increase the traffic load on Blake Avenue. The existing foot traffic is already high with the Rafta bus stop at 27th Street, and will be considerably higher with the Bell Rippey development. Parking is limited at the Rafta bus stop, which also adds pressure to parking in the area. At their February 4th, 2020 meeting, the new developers reviewed their proposed plans for the property. It is our understanding that they are proposing 100 apartments located in six, three and a half story buildings based on taking advantage of the relatively steep grade of the site. This is an increase of 30 apartments from the previous developer. They were able to increase the number of apartments by eliminating parking under the buildings proposed by the previous developer. There would be a mix of one and two bedroom rental apartments. They are not planning on any elevators, so there will be no handicap access for the upper floors. Per the Glenwood Springs Development Code, Table 0.30.1, they are required to have 1.5 parking spaces per each dwelling unit and a guest parking space for every five dwellings. Based on 100 apartments, they would need to have 170 parking spaces at a minimum. The developers noted they plan to ask for variance in the parking space requirements, which we believe should not be allowed due to the overloaded parking in the area. Sincerely, Richard and Janet O'Connell.
The next comment was received from Joan Troth on April 28th. I request that the planning and zoning deny the request to approve 100 apartments and six buildings between Blake and Palmer for these reasons. The city's mission statement includes maintaining the small town character of Glenwood Springs. Massive buildings do not comply with this statement. Adding the huge number of new residents on the south edge of town will impact the surrounding neighborhood negatively regarding home values and traffic. Adding more cars to Grand Avenue will result in congestion becoming the norm. Adding the large number of apartments will impact the city's water supply and sewage capacity. The city of Glenwood Springs has no responsibility to provide housing for up valley workers. Joan Troth, 3202 Cooper Court.
The next comment comes from Sarah Sims. Please accept this communication as Mountain Valley Developmental Services official public comment regarding the Bell Rippey development of the Oakhurst subdivision. Mountain Valley Developmental Services is a community centered board and program approved service provider supporting people who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. We own a home at 2503 Palmer Avenue, which is adjacent to said development. This home supports seven adults of varying levels of need, but nearly all require a little extra time and space to physically maneuver through their environments. This includes getting into and out of vehicles on Palmer Avenue and 26th Street. I am aware of the current issues regarding the on-street parking to accommodate for the overflow of Oakhurst Town Homes and the lack of sidewalks in this area. After attending the neighborhood meeting on February 4th, it is clear that the new development will exacerbate these concerns. Additionally, the increase in traffic produced by the property's future inhabitants will inevitably render Palmer Avenue a higher density traffic area which is not equipped to handle this volume of vehicles. I'm worried about the safety of the people living not only in our home, but in the neighborhood, and their ability to navigate these hazards. Our current space is adequate to accommodate for staff vehicles and specifically equipped vehicles, which are larger than typical, on which the residents rely. However, with more vehicles and increased traffic flow, I fear that we won't be able to safely or easily find parking, load unload residents, or maneuver our vehicles onto and off Palmer Avenue and 26th Street. Here are a few considerations to mitigate our concerns. Request the developers commit to subdivision improvements to address these issues mentioned above. Extend these improvements past developments property lines to 23rd and Palmer, along 26th Street, and from 27th to 23rd and Blake. And dedicate city resources to creating better parking and traffic plans that include safety measures for pedestrians along the streets mentioned above. Thank you for your consideration. Sarah Sims.
Next comment was received from Elaine Speck on Thursday, April 30th. This is a follow up to our Zoom meeting held on April 28th. In 2017, the P&amp;Z held numerous meetings for a development similar to the current proposal. We had dozens of concerned citizens attending the meetings and speaking of their concerns, i.e. increased traffic flow, to open or not open the gate on Blake, one way on Blake, one way on Palmer, density of the proposal, grade of the road. P&amp;Z will hopefully look back to see your concerns at that time. The proposal, although finally approved, went silent. Several months ago, notices were sent to residents about a new proposal. The meeting was held in a small room at the community center with standing room only, six chairs provided. Nothing pertinent came of this gathering. Preliminary architectural plans were shown. It is perplexing that this new developer can just pick up where the previous developer failed and move forward. Are they not required to start as a new entity? The proposal has significant differences. The next meeting of P&amp;Z will be held on Tuesday. The next meeting of P and Z will be held on Tuesday, May 4th, one week after the Zoom meeting. The impact to the residents of Oakhurst condominiums is truly hard. The traffic will be a nightmare. I have lived at 2506 Palmer since the 70s. Now I find that I might have to move my driveway to accommodate the new construction. Really? Please consider tabling this matter and resume when we are on the other side of the current health crisis. Most of us are still in some kind of social distancing and safer-home mode. Thank you for your consideration.
The next comment comes from Laura Speck, and that was received April 30th. I am requesting that you deny/ postpone any decision that could possibly be made in regards to the development proposed by Triumph LLC during this time of pandemic in our world. Most of our lives have been turned upside down, and I feel that it is incredibly irresponsible to make any crucial decisions on a project of this scale that greatly affects so many citizens. I know that many other concerned residents were unable to communicate their questions due to the Zoom/ YouTube platform on Tuesday night. It is only fair that you have heard from every citizen before rendering any decisions. This presentation was the first that many of us had seen the illustrations and information of the proposed plans, and it was also the first time we got to, quote, "see," unquote, who the members of Triumph Development LLC are. During this lengthy presentation, many disturbing topics were brought up that need to be discussed before we continue any further. Please allow me to present a few of my family's concerns. Number one, this project is still too much for this land parcel. They have proposed to basically tear up most of the property to construct buildings, concrete, asphalt, and fences. They have not taken into consideration any neutral slash open space to allow for significant privacy or environmental impact. Number two, why is it that when new developers, parenthetic comment, mainly who reside in other towns or states, unparenthesis, that see a potential to develop areas in our town seem to have more rights and allowances than the current residents who have been investing into our community and paying taxes for years? As I mentioned on the video conference the other night, my father built our house 48 years ago on this land. The whole area was then zoned for single-family house developments. Unfortunately, zones have been changed over the years, and the Bell Rippey multifamily landowners seem hell-bent on only allowing large developers to decimate the land and turn the whole area into high-density housing units. The reason why there is such a pushback and frustrations over these proposals is because it is just too much and needs to be scaled down to a more measurable and reasonable size. I would like the newer members on this commission to know that this is at least the fourth time in the past 12 years that we, as the neighbors, have had to deal with these proposals. Yet we are never informed as to what happened when the previous plans fell through or failed. We are left questioning and hoping that perhaps the landowners have finally realized it is time for another type of development option to be explored. Example, open space or a park. Number three, just because Planning and Zoning and the City Council approved the last development in 2017, that does not just grandfather in this new proposed development. There are significant changes that have been made in this plan, as well as a whole new set of questions that need to be answered. One of the biggest concerns that impacts our family's property is this new north-side parking lot that would be directly in front of our house. This was not in the previous plan. I am sure that any one of you reading this can appreciate how difficult that is for us to even comprehend this type of change. I ask that you have compassion and try to imagine if this was your house. The street lights/noise would penetrate our beautiful dark skies at night. Headlights would be facing directly towards our front windows, as well as the Oakhurst condominiums, not to mention the exhaust that would be contaminating our entire neighborhood with the substantial increase of vehicles, not only driving into the proposed parking lots, but also idling in the cooler winter months. It is kind of unbelievable that an entire plot of land needs to be developed for a parking lot that only accommodates some 25 cars. How greedy and unnecessary, and dare I say cruel. Mike O'Connor casually mentioned that we, the house at 2506 Palmer, would need to reconfigure our driveway to accommodate for this new plan. What? As you know by my comments on the video chat, it was completely shocking news to us and absolutely unacceptable. There should be more concern for not impacting the current residents in any sort of way. Again, let me state, why would you allow a project to progress that causes so much disruption to such a large area of citizens? The people from 23rd Street, the entire block of Palmer Avenue down to the Oakhurst condominiums, 26th Street, and Blake Street are all being impacted, not to mention Rafta, Highway 682, 25th Street, and more. Doesn't that seem a bit much to you? What I would like to propose is a compromise. I understand that change is inevitable, but no positive changes can ever occur without compassion and flexibility. What I propose is to eliminate the north-side parking lot completely and leave that area as a neutral open space. That would alleviate our major concerns, as well as for some of the residents at Oakhurst. It would also greatly decrease the potential traffic volume on Palmer Avenue and 25th Street. I would also like to see this project scaled down from 100 units to 80 or less. I think buildings E and F could be removed from this plan to assist the direct impact on Oakhurst. I propose no sidewalks be developed on the side of Palmer Avenue, as one commissioner mentioned. It is a sidewalk that goes nowhere, because there are no other sidewalks constructed for it to attach to until the other side of 23rd Street. The entryway to the parking lot would be removed completely, as well as there would be only one entry point to the main internal parking lot, and that would be located further down on Palmer. This would allow for an area to remain peaceful and calm and make good strides to be kind neighbors to each other. It would also not impact our family's house in any way and allow for us to breathe easy again. I would also like to see the proposed debris flow fence be moved significantly further away from our property line to allow for spatial distance and privacy. In addition, I would like the developer to post signage of no parking areas so that Palmer Avenue Road is not filled up with additional vehicles, trailers, campers, et cetera, because they do not fit into the allocated spaces. No one can really believe that 1.5 parking spaces will accommodate the accurate number of what people will actually be driving. They are going to need to strongly limit and monitor the amount of vehicles their tenants own and not just charge them an extra fee if and when they show up with more. The main source of impact that this development needs to focus its energy on is the wide-open space at the corner of Palmer and Blake, where it is not affecting the current residents as much. I would also like to see these property owners address the trash and homeless encampments that have taken over the area up here. Initially, I wanted to bring this topic up on the video chat the other night, but then so many other more pertinent issues arose that I forgot to mention it again. I'm in the process of creating a task force to finally clean up these horrific camps once and for all in this area, from Palmer down to the south side of Walmart. Ecos will have to be hired to help us clean up these toxic and incredibly dangerous sites. I would like this developer, as well as the members of Bell Rippey, to consider contributing significantly to this cause. It is partially the fault of these current landowners that have allowed this situation to have gotten to this point, as well as BLM and the state. I would hope that Triumph Developers LLC would also like to help and make contributions that would benefit our entire neighborhood, that would show us some good faith that you are really trying to be a positive part of our neighborhood, and perhaps we can really all come together in hopes of a development that benefits us all. I appreciate you taking the time to read my lengthy email, and I look forward to hearing back from you soon. Sincerely, Laura Speck, 2506 Palmer Avenue.
The next comment is from multiple people, so I'll just read it as is, April 30th, 2020. "We, the people living in the Oakhurst Townhomes, oppose the building of the proposed apartments because, colon, 'Number one, the increased traffic will make the neighborhood hazardous to walk or ride bikes in.' 'Number two, an increase of vehicles will make an already bad road worse, especially in winter.' 'Number three, there's not enough places to park for the current residents and their guests' family to park.' 'Number four, do you think there will be only one car per apartment, and no one will even have any visitors? At least 200-plus parking spaces are needed. Where will they be?' 'Number five, low-income housing will make this section of Glenwood a slum part of the city faster. In slums, there is always an increase of crime, violence, and drug dealing, in parentheses, gangs. Can the police department handle this? We do not want the apartment people coming into our neighborhood destroying our property.' 'Number six, how are the homeless people and their dogs that chase people going to be addressed?' And it's signed by a number of people, and I apologize if I get the names wrong here. Lori Nelson, Oakhurst, number 34. Dulce Ramirez, Oakhurst, number 33. Bianca Ramirez, number 33. Bradley Rice, number 10. Brandy Rice, number 10. It's a name that starts with C, and the last name starts with C, number 10. Drake Timroth, number 7. Christine Levy, number 7. Again, it's a name that I can't make out, but it's also from number 7. Steve, and that's the last name that starts with G that I can't, that I can't read. Number 28, Erica Crampton, I think it is. Number 28, Marie Dom, number 4. George Dana, number 1. Shelley Lot, number 19, Oakhurst. Joan, again, it's the last name, starts with G, and I'm sorry, it's, these are handwritten, so it's hard to see. Number 15, Brianna Millsbaugh, number 18. Zachary Apka, number 18, and Daisy Apka, number 18.
Moving on, letter received May 1st, 2020 from Annie Hogha at 678 Ky Road 127, Glenwood Springs. She is the owner of 519 Easy Street, Glenwood Springs. Firstly, thank you for the comprehensive informational session with the P and Z Commission and the developer and related parties on April 28th, 2020. I attended the meeting via the Zoom protocol. I was also in attendance at the February 4th, 2020, Community Information Session at the Eric Glawood Springs Community Center. My concerns with this project are primarily related to parking. Looking at the number of bedrooms in the project and doing the math at the average number of people per bedroom, as estimated by Michael O'Connor during the April 28th, 2020 meeting, I get 204 people. That's 163 bedrooms times 1.25 people per bedroom. Note that this estimate seems low to me due to the likelihood that the per-unit rental cost will be high at approximately $2,000-plus per unit as of the initial leasing upon project completion. In my experience, higher rental rates equal too-high occupancy-per-unit intent efforts to manage affordability. Note that the $2,000-plus per month amount was suggested by Michael O'Connor at the February community meeting about the project. But, back to the parking. Perhaps a portion of the 204 people are either children or the unusual adulthood is not on a motor vehicle. With a non-vehicle estimate at 15% of the total 204 people, the number of car owners drops to 174. The proposal includes a total of 148 parking spaces. At one car per person, this is an immediate parking spot deficit of 26 spaces on an average of 0.85 parking spots per vehicle-owning tenant. I would speculate that the extra vehicles related to the tents of this project will be parking anywhere they can, along Blake Avenue, Palmer Avenue, and 26th Street, as well as in the Walmart parking lot and the Rafta Park and Ride parking lot. As pointed out by Trish Kramer during the public comment portion of the April 28th meeting, reduced vehicle usage does not necessarily equate to reduced vehicle ownership. In other words, yes, this project may result in more people taking the bus and biking, but they will likely still own a vehicle or two. For example, work vehicle, car for recreating on the weekends, et cetera. I understand that Triumph is simply taking advantage of the parking spot requirements as dictated by the city of Glenwood Springs. I therefore respectfully request that the P and Z, as well as City Planning Department and City Council reconsider required parking allotments for the development of this type, and subsequently deny approval of this project. Ironically, I ran across an article in the Glenwood Springs Post Independent dated April 20th, 2016, titled "Developers' Proposed Fee Schedule Still Falls Short." The article includes a few interesting tidbits. One I find interesting is seeing that the P and Z recommended denial of the 116-year Oasis Creek Apartments due to the building height and parking code variances. End quotes. "One project that would benefit from whatever fee reductions come about is the proposed 116-year Oasis Creek Apartments", which is also before council on Thursday. "That project has its own hurdles to clear, including a recommendation for denial by the City's Planning and Zoning Commission, primarily due to the developers' requested building height and parking code variances." End quote. First, it is interesting to me that 1.5 or less parking spots per unit is used to be considered a variant. Now it appears to be the status quo for projects of this type. Secondly, I wonder who benefits from such minimal parking requirements. I would guess the developers are okay with it. Seems like nothing but trouble for prospective tenants and rental management agents. Other interesting tidbits from this article, from Chad Lee, local land use attorney. Quote, "The comprehensive plan dated in 2011 was the product of hundreds of hours of citizen comment and participation. The comprehensive plan acknowledges the dearth of housing in Glenwood. It also acknowledges the market's inability to deliver both affordable and attainable housing. Part of the problem, he said, is Glenwood Springs' affordable housing mandate, which requires developers of free market for purchase housing to build a certain number of below-market deed-restricted units as well. The comprehensive plan explicitly says that the city will use incentives and regulations to encourage attainable housing, he said." End quote. This, to me, explains in part why there are so many rental complexes springing up all over town. The developers are incentivized to build this type of housing in Glenwood Springs since deed-restricted units are a drag on their profits. Additionally, at the February 4th, 20 meeting, Michael O'Connor stated that the Bell Rippey project is not considered affordable housing. I would agree that $2,000 a month is just one parking spot for families. Two cars would not make me feel as if I had found anything close to affordable housing. Finally, the attainable piece, attainable, seems to be subject to considerable interpretation. Perhaps Bell Rippey units will be attainable for middle-income earners, but I must wonder, will they be desirable? Finally, if the Bell Rippey project continues down the path of approval, I respectfully propose that a city of Glenwood Springs' condition of approval become part of the permanent record to the effect that leasing agents and perpetuity are required to explicitly specify number of parking spots per each unit and assign spots per spot numbering system that correlates to a signed number physically attached to the actual space, as well as one on the lease agreement. I believe the existing neighborhood in Glenwood Springs community deserves recourse that such a condition could afford, in the event of the parking situation, become a free-for-all at some point in the future. This condition of approval could also enact no parking zones on the portion of Palmer Avenue and Blake Avenue that abut the Bell Rippey property, along with enforcement of the no-parking zones. I'm also compelled to comment on the opening of the Blake Gate and the city plan to make Blake Avenue between 24th Street and 26th Street a one-way south. Multiple towns last night, the one-way portion was referred to as being 23rd Street and 26th Street, so I would appreciate clarification on that. My understanding is that it would be between 24th and 26th Streets, and I am supportive of this plan in order to prevent cheater traffic at times of high-volume northbound travel on Highway 82. Easy Street intersects Blake Avenue and the proposed one-way section, and I believe Easy Street residents would accept the inconvenience of a lifetime of left-hand turns off of Easy Street over the likelihood of this section of Blake Avenue seeing increased traffic in both directions. Note that this section of Blake Avenue is very narrow. A one-way section here could potentially pave the way, no pun intended, for improvements to Blake Avenue that could include gutter and sidewalk. I strongly encourage all city personnel, P and Z commissioners, and city council members to walk this stretch of Blake Avenue prior to making any binding decisions regarding its fate. Finally, I wish to emphasize the public comment from Trish Kramer during the April 28th, 20 meeting regarding her concerns about coronavirus and its effects on the city's ability to support and improve infrastructure peripheral to the Bell Rippey proposed project. For example, Blake Avenue, Palmer Avenue, 26th Street, and 23rd Street, and supporting infrastructure therein, such as sewer and water systems, gutters and sidewalks. In other words, does this project put undue burden on the city of Glenwood Springs, as well as the neighbors of this project during this time when the city has already had to slash their budget? In closing, I wholeheartedly support infill on public transportation for Glenwood Springs and the Warren Fork Valley. I also support smart growth. In my opinion, the Bell Rippey project as proposed just does not deliver on the smart growth piece of what Glenwood Springs- growth piece of what Glenwood Springs deserves. Respectfully submitted, Annie Hogg Ha.
The next one was written May 4, 2020. It's titled Bell Ripley Development. I'm writing on behalf of myself, Dave Mailhorn, and my family living at 2407 Palmer Avenue. Family members include my wife, Polly, my 80-year-old mother, Linda, my daughter Shelby, and my granddaughter Eliza, nine months, as well as our three dogs. First, I would like to start with the City of Glenwood Springs' mission statement that states, quote, "To meet the health, safety, and welfare needs of its citizens and contribute to their quality of life, the City of Glenwood Springs and its employees believe the following." End quote. Bullet point number seven states, quote, "We advance the interest of the community openly and transparently." End quote. In 2018, the City of Glenwood Springs voted to open the Blake Street Gate and make Blake Street one-way without any notifications to its citizens. I implore you to rethink that decision. Second, the City of Glenwood Springs 2020 slash, or 2020 to 2025 Strategic Vision, bullet point number three, quote, "Protect and preserve our quality of life," states, quote, "There are challenges to our quality of life, including traffic congestion, rising housing costs, increased impacts from growth, et cetera." End quote. With these two statements, I have many concerns about the new Bell Ripley development as outlined below. Walkability to retail in downtown. Currently, there are no sidewalks on South Blake. Currently, there are no sidewalks on 26th Street. Currently, there are no sidewalks on Palmer Avenue. How does the city reconcile the walkability of the neighborhoods if there is nowhere to walk other than on the streets? Conditions of adjoining streets. South Blake Street is in very poor condition. 26th Street is in very poor condition. Palmer Street has no sidewalks and is used as a major walking route for the Palmer and adjacent neighborhoods. 23rd Street is in poor condition. Does the city currently have the means to fix these streets before this development is completed? Develop affordable housing. What is the definition of affordable per the city? What is the proposed rent for the Bell Ripley property? How much free market housing is already approved and/or being developed? The Lofts, Six Canyons, the old Buffalo Valley property, the old Lutheran Church property in West Glenwood. Does the city really need 100 more units of free market housing? Parking. The 27th Street Park and Ride parking already overflows into South Blake, 26th Street, and upper Palmer. Oakhurst condominiums has 34 units and 80 parking spots, and their residents overflow Park on South Blake and 26th Street. Rafta buses are currently parking by the Blake Street Gate as they, as they can no longer park at the Old American Furniture parking lot. Where will they go? Bell Ripley snow removal program currently is to plow the snow into parking spaces. Where will those cars go? Does the city have a plan to deal with the parking issue that will be exacerbated with, with Bell Ripley? Traffic in the adjacent neighborhoods. In a letter to the City of Glenwood Springs dated November 21, 2017, from McDowell Engineering LLC, attached, several points were made about the traffic impacts from the Bell Ripley development. Blake Street one-way would route northbound traffic onto Palmer Avenue. Traffic calming measures would include curb extensions, but there currently are no curbs nor sidewalk on Palmer. A graph on this document shows the 86.5% increase in traffic with Blake Street one-way and the Blake Street Gate open. How does that kind of impact not need a C.D.O. access permit? Oops. In a revised traffic study by McDowell Engineering, attached, the project traffic impact on North Palmer was estimated at four VPH, which is vehicles per hour, AM peak traffic, and five vehicles per hour PM peak traffic. Those numbers are not realistic. They are almost fanciful. We have seen the impact of traffic through Palmer Avenue during the gap. See attached photo. When Palmer was not connected to Blake and the Blake Street Gate was closed, the neighborhood is very concerned with our quiet community being overrun with traffic. Bell Ripley P&amp;Z Meeting, April 28, 2020. The statement, quote, "We will figure that out later," end quote, was used frequently. That is not an acceptable statement. The time to resolve issues is before they are created, not vice versa. The developer noted a, quote, "10-year involvement," end quote. What does that mean? They will no longer manage this development and any issues it creates. I look forward to working with P&amp;Z as well as a receptive city council to resolve these issues. Until these are solved, it is irresponsible to approve this development. Now I note that there are a number of attachments that were included in this email, which are actually not possible for me to read.
So the next item that is in our list is actually a comment that is, comes through as a PowerPoint. And I see that Allison Brett is on the line. So if, if you would allow me, Commissioner Dem, to share my screen, and then if you would promote or allow Allison Brett to speak so that she can go through these slides herself.
Jen, is, is this the last written comment we have?
It, it isn't, but we have kind of, we have 63 pages of this, and we're on page 35. So if you'll indulge me, I'd like to, to let Allison do her own slides.
I, I think that'll work.
Okay, give me just a second here. I think it's the one.
Alyssa, please state your name and address for the record, and you can comment on your Alyssa, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hello?
Hi, please state your name and address for the record, and you can comment on your slides.
Thank you so much for letting me do this. And what I'm gonna say isn't new, but I just appreciate a more visual approach. And what most concerns me is what's in the slides is the conflation of...
Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, yeah, Allison Brett, 2201 Crestwood Drive.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I called you Alyssa, I meant to call you Allison.
Oh, it's all right.
We get the volume increased, can't she?
Did you hear that, Allison?
Yes, I can't increase my volume anymore, I don't think. I did try.
Okay, I hear you fine, but some others may not.
Um, so it's the, it's the conflation of the development with the opening of the routes that's most concerning to me and lots, I hear lots of other people. And the traffic studies didn't, I feel, present exactly what is going to happen once the development is built. And on the next slide, I had some questions about the data that has, that I think should be available from, you know, the, the peak period of Highway 82, and what of much, what amount of that traffic will come onto the new routes? And, or having had experience, as many of you have, with how the 82 backs up, I'm sure you probably know already how many of those vehicles will come off there, but I think proper data is needed. On the next slide, I just took some pictures of the, the very busy areas that are going to contribute to this traffic on the routes that, in my mind, are inadequate. You have lots of commuter traffic, but also the Walmart traffic is, we're going to get a big proportion of that. And it's, there's also going to be commercial vehicles as well, which is really very concerning. And so it's not just us who are already living there, it will also be the new, new residents. They will have significant traffic going past theirs as well. And so my question is, you know, how can that be assisted? And on the next slide is, one of the roads that I think is going to be a problem is this 27th Street. I have taken the photo from actually a high point, but this actually, this is steep, and it's almost like a blind summit at the top. There's people coming from the right there, and they don't stop, even though they're meant to. Ahead of you, you can see where Oakhurst is. That's where pedestrians come out, and there's nowhere for them to cross at all. No pavements from the Oakhurst to the left up that road. And so that's my concern. And in winter, it's really slippery on that road. On the pavement, it's deadly if you're walking down to the bus. And also obviously slippery in other conditions. So on my other, next slide, there's some signs already up in Oakhurst, and I'm really concerned about this. I've walked several times along this road myself with my grandchildren with a stroller, and you can see how vulnerable people are. There is, you think about two lanes of traffic going backwards and forwards here. Then on the right, you can see how near the residents are. The green where the children play, no fencing or anything. And so they would definitely need protection, but also something that I haven't really heard mentioned too much is the pollution and the noise. My second, that's, sorry, my next slide, again, more signs, very, very, I've heard people say this already, frequently ignored, and I've witnessed this many times because I frequent this area lots. And so how on earth are we going to protect all these people and the actual areas? On the next slide, the, this is, I actually, I, I was only here for a short while, but already that truck on the right there in the first picture, he just ignored the stop sign altogether. I am looking down from where the people from Oakhurst nearby would come down, trying to cross there to get to the bus is very hazardous. I've done that many times, and there's nothing to stop anybody from sort of, and coming back from the bus in the dark is really frightening. I was once almost run over because somebody ignored the stop sign that would be on the left there. They came out of the Rafta Car Park, didn't stop, were on their phone, and I, I was inches away from being run over. The, the picture on the right is me, I was standing in the Oakhurst road. There's only one entry and exit into Oakhurst, and as you can see, that slopes strangely down into the 26th Street, which is going to be busy. And it's, not only is that extremely slippery despite their efforts to, for snow rem, and ice removal, it's just a hazard every winter. And, but it's also, you know, where children are, and it, it's, there's just nothing stopping anyone just from having an accident there. So the next slide, more of Oakhurst, just the other side there. You can see where Oakhurst comes out onto 26th Street. And so you can see how inadequate that exit there is from their entry and exit onto a busy road. Again, another almost blind summit there, and it sounds a bit of an exaggeration, but when you're going up there, you sort of have to accelerate to get up the hill. So not only is that bringing a lot of exhaust fumes, it's also speeding. And at the top there, you sort of almost have to, well, if you don't almost stop, you'll, you could easily hit somebody coming either left or from the left or from the right. At the top there is Palmer, obviously. And so that's a hazard and another way that the routes are unsuitable. I've reiterated again how many people walk, cycle, and I thought this was the travel that people were trying to encourage, and this is going to force more people into their vehicles because it won't be safe enough for walking. So then the picture on the right, looking north up towards Palmer, which is the place where there will be no accommodation apparently for, to make the street safer. Many times if people, which they did when the Grand Avenue Bridge was closed, it's going to be, you know, people speeding up there, and that's where a lot of families live, lots of children. And the next slide, nearly finished, is just, again, reiteration, lots of people walk up to this little green here. This is in Crestwood. As you can see, this junction actually, to me, is quite a concern. You can see that lady walking down there with her dog on the right. That goes down towards Alpine Bank. I can't remember the name of the street and the number of the street. But there's, again, cars come zooming up there, again, because of the steepness of the hill. And so you're, you're going to have increased pollution, the noise, and, but also the danger. Lots of children, again, around here, you can see on the green there. I just, you know, I don't have to be out there long for, to see somebody on that green. And there was a really good suggestion, perhaps we could consider having Palmer one-way too, because the trouble is with just having Blake, yeah, Blake, is that Palmer is going to bear the brunt of all the traffic, and it's going to be not a good experience. And on, on this junction here is dread to me. I'm sure there is going to be an accident. And I think that's almost me finished. I've just got, and one thing that I don't see much mention of is the air quality. I looked on the Garfield site and also on the city website. I feel as though the city is neglecting testing air pollution from vehicles. The last time I saw that little machine, in fact, little sort of thing on wheels, was right up by the elementary school, and that was several years ago. And it was tucked away so much that none of the 82 traffic pollution probably would have even reached the sensors. I, it can only be worse once we get lots of extra traffic there. And it seems strange to think that Glenwood, this, the mission of the city would be to make more residents sick with exhaust fumes than already are. So, you know, why are we spreading it around? And so there's an admission in these two signs that exhaust fumes are dangerous. It doesn't matter whether you're idling or driving, and I'd like more consideration of that as well, please. And then finally, that, that other picture, more people on that junction, and again, brings my fears to light about the, the way that people drive around there. And thank you so much for letting me present to you this evening.
Allison, thank you very much for taking the time and putting these slides together for us, is very informative. We're going back to, I guess Trent is up with the next one.
Well, I, I didn't take my turn, so I feel like I should take my turn.
Okay, Jen, please.
Yes. To the Glenwood City Council members, I live in the Oakhurst Townhomes in front of where the proposed low-income apartments are to be built. I think building those apartments is a very bad idea. In Oakhurst, there are a number of renters. The units of the, the renters have trash around them, lots of visitors, and they tend not to follow the, I think it's rules. They come and go at all hours and often are very noisy. They all drive cars, and there are not enough parking spaces now. Increasing the number of renters will only make the problem worse. There is no fence between Oakhurst and the proposed apartments. That means people living in those apartments can break into the yards in Oakhurst units. 100 apartments will increase the crime, violence, and illegal activity in the area. The police force in Glenwood do not have enough personnel to handle the increased crime that happens with low-income housing. Another reason the apartments are a bad idea is the wildlife on that hillside. There are deer, bear, mountain lions, and coyotes that roam, roam there. Where will they go? They already have a limited area in Glenwood. The only wildlife that wouldn't be missed are the... They already have a limited area in Glenwood. The only wildlife that wouldn't be missed are the homeless people and their dogs. However, I'm sure they would stay and continue to be a fire hazard and wander through the apartment complex as they do the neighborhood now. There are only a few, oh, these are only a few of my concerns. I would ask the people on the council, especially if you live in Glenwood, to consider the effect adding more renters units, rental units to this neighborhood would cost Glenwood an increased crime. In parentheses, slum neighborhood, end parentheses, and decreased tourist visits. People don't want to vacation in areas with a high crime rate, would you? It's a short walk to downtown and tourists from this neighborhood. It's in your hands to make this decision. I hope the decision you make is for Glenwood and not financial reasons. Thank you for your time, Joan Guillenelli, Unit 15.
Thank you, Jen. Next we have another comment from Richard O'Connell, received Tuesday, May 5. We own a multi-generational home at 2409 Palmer Avenue. We are concerned that the Bell Rippey development will end up with non-residential parking and unsafe traffic on the developed portion of Palmer Avenue. The existing roads do not support the Oakhurst Townhomes and Rafta parking, and the new Bell Rippey development will make a bad situation worse. We are also concerned the proposed schedule does not provide time to evaluate the many considerations for a development of this size. The city development code calls for the creation of the best environment for the city by promoting an orderly, efficient and integrated development of Glenwood Springs. It is clear from the April 26 meeting that the new developers are relying on previous development plans and decisions that are not necessary, necessarily in the current best interest of the existing neighborhood. It is important that all ideas from the existing neighborhood be discussed and evaluated. To do this, we suggest the continuance of the review process with an open public meeting. The Zoom meetings are simple, but many of the existing neighbors do not have the computer skills to participate in the meeting. Ideas with the city development commission should consider and discuss to integrate into the Bell Rippey development with the existing neighborhood include the creation of a cul-de-sac for the development, adding speed bumps to the developed portion of Palmer, making Palmer one-way south, adding sidewalks through the developed portion of Palmer Avenue, improving the intersection of 23rd Street and Grand to handle the increased traffic. Sincerely, Richard and Janet O'Connell.
The next comment comes from Lynette Marie, and that was received May 4, 2020. Dear Ms. Ricehill, my name is Lynette Marie Laserta, and I live at 285 Michaela Lane in Newcastle. My dwelling place was at 1814 Yuray Road in Glenwood Springs just a few weeks ago, until I realized it was contaminated with black mold and I was forced to relocate temporarily. As someone that attends multiple homeowners association meetings a year, there is a common thread of lack of parking. The proposed 1.5 spaces per unit is an unrealistic number to accommodate the number of vehicles that will require a parking spot. Renters and owners have multiple cars. Glenwood Springs is the bedroom community for Aspen. And even if someone took the bus to work, they own vehicles. Some get to get work trucks as part of their job packages. Sure, the TDW allows for 136 spaces. However, it is not enough parking for the size of this residential project. It is an all-too-common theme at Cardiff Glen, not enough parking for the families that own two and, excuse me, two and three cars. I could go on. In closing, please don't reduce the parking spots to less than 170. When all is said and done, the parking burden slash headache will be left to the surrounding neighborhood, the residents of this project and property management company. Best, Lynette Marie Laserta.
The next comment is from Ryan Roberts to the City of Glenwood Springs Council. I think it is vital that the vote on the amended plans for the proposed new development on Palmer Avenue be delayed until the residents have the capacity to speak about it face-to-face with each other. The Zoom meetings are a barrier to some residents. In addition, the restrictions on being able to assemble in groups in a public debate are a substantial barrier to the process. The developer changed plans unilaterally and must allow time for the new plans to be reconsidered. Our capacity as residents to assemble freely has been severely impeded. We must have time to reconnect, reconsider and offer coherent input. The council Zoom meetings are restrictive in a way that traditional debate and regular council meetings are not. Please reschedule the decision process until we are in a position to meet up. Sincerely, Ryan Roberts, 2419 Palmer Avenue, Glenwood Springs.
Next flyer is received from David Cox and Cynthia Green. Dear Ms. Ricehill, we are owners and residents of 2504 Palmer Avenue in the Oakhurst subdivision neighborhood in Glenwood Springs. We respectfully submit the following comments and concerns regarding the Bell Rippey neighborhood applicant proposed development that has been submitted to you for review. Concern number one, community meeting with neighborhood. We understand the challenges with public meetings in light of COVID-19. However, development of the intensity proposed in the applicant's plan, especially with the variance is requested, demands that effective public meetings be held. The Oakhurst neighborhood has not been accommodated with such an effective forum. As we demonstrated at the P&amp;Z meeting last week, Zoom meetings are an insufficient substitute and do not provide adequate means for meaningful public comment and participation. At a minimum, proceeding with the development application should be delayed until the residents of the neighborhood are afforded an appropriate public hearing on the development. Concern two, development proposal differs from predecessors. Applicant's narrative makes several references to the Glenwood Multifamily LLC project that was granted a development permit in 2018. The current development proposed by applicant differs from that of its predecessors in several ways. One, number of units increased from 79 to 100. Two, number of parking spaces decreased from 163 to 148. And three, acquisition of an additional parcel in March 2020 at 2710 Blake, requested to be rezoned and included in the applicant's development. Because of the significance of each of these changes, applicant's development and related variance requests should be evaluated independently of those granted to its predecessor. Concern three, variance for variety of housing types. Applicant is requesting relief from the municipal requirements of housing variety on a three-acre development due to unique site constraints. The site constraints of this parcel are self-evident and should be known by the developer prior to the purchase of the property with proper due diligence. Requesting a variance from a non-site limitation is an unreasonable request to the city and places unreasonable demands on both the city and its citizenry. Applicant further states, quote, "Multifamily rental units are so badly needed in Glenwood Springs," end quote, as rationale for approving its request. This claim is inconsistent with the fact that the Sixth Canyon Apartment Complex in West Glenwood is largely, largely vacant. There are also hundreds of new partially completed units to be completed in the near term within the city when it's proper. At the southern edge of the city, applicant's development is so inconsistent with the state of city goals of directing development upward rather than outward and to redevelopment locations, preserving natural resources and minimizing human wildlife interactions and directing development to cost-effective locations to serve. Concern four, design variance, sidewalks on both sides of the street. Again, applicant is requesting relief due to unique site constraints. The site constraints of this parcel are self-evident and should have been known by the developer prior to the purchase of the property. Requesting a variance from a non-site limitation is an unreasonable request of the city. Because of the development's high-density nature and the applicant is promoting it as transit-oriented, Section 704070 F1A2 of the municipal code is clear and vitally important to accomplish the goals of residential transitional zone development to promote foot traffic over vehicular traffic to the adjacent stores, Rafta parking lot and neighborhood facilities. Concern five, design variance, grades at driveway parking lot and intersection approach. In the past, several other developments requesting similar grading variances due to the unique site constraints were declined by the city. This project did not be allowed variances of this type when others were routinely declined in the past. Further, the high-density nature of this development and attendant vehicle traffic necessitate safe ingress and egress of both vehicles and pedestrians. Again, the topography of this particular lot should not be used as justification to abandon established municipal code principles. Concern six, rezoning newly acquired parcel included in the development. Applicant is requesting rezoning of an RH zone parcel at 2710 Blake Avenue to include in its development. Applicant recently acquired this parcel in March 2020 to eliminate the existing triplex structure and its proposed construction of an 18-unit building, but exceed on applicant's schematic. Applicant is requesting rezoning of this parcel to allow the construction of 100 units between it and the adjacent parcel, along with redirecting traffic on Blake Avenue to a southbound one-way and opening what has become to be known as the Walmart Gate. What this density and revision to current traffic flow will be to increase the northbound traffic on Palmer Avenue. The currently developed area of Palmer Avenue is all zoned RM1 with a current density of 11 single-family homes with a total of 41 veterans. Applicant's development will increase the density on Palmer Avenue nearly fourfold in number of veterans and tenfold in number of households. Pushing all this increased density northbound onto the downtown, into the downtown core of Glenwood Springs via Palmer Avenue does not comply with the comprehensive plan goals of sustainability, maintaining small-town character, directing development to locations and building forms that are cost-effective to serve in compact forms and in infill and/or redevelopment. This development is redirecting growth outward rather than the stated goal of directing growth inward. Further, the decreased traffic load on Palmer Avenue from the applicant's request to the Walmart gate opening and southbound only on Blake Avenue forces a medium-density neighborhood infrastructure on Palmer Avenue to support the traffic demands of high-density transitional density, commercial density from Walmart through applicant's development. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration of our concerns for both the neighborhood and the vibrant sustainability of development in the city of Glenwood Springs. David Cox and Cynthia Green.
The next comment comes from Erin and William Lee, Tuesday, May 5, 2020. Respectfully to everyone whom it may concern. My name is Erin Lee and I live at 2502 Palmer Avenue, Glenwood Springs, Colorado. I thank you for taking the time to read my letter. I would like to first and foremost let you all know that I am absolutely not opposed to the development and, to development and growth. In fact, I like it. Truthfully, I personally am one that loves change. When the change creates a better situation or environment, rather it be inside my own home, my neighborhood or my community. I have tried to embrace the new Bell Rippey development that is being proposed with an open mind and have went as far as reaching out to the developer myself to ask questions, inquire with what I think could be thoughtful ideas that would possibly become good solutions. All through Mr. O'Connor. Although Mr. O'Connor was very polite and listened to what I had to say, he ultimately was telling me that the things I had to say needed to be directed to and addressed by the city. I'm going to pause this for just a minute. I've got an alarm going off. Hold on a sec. Okay, sorry about that, everyone. All right, to continue. I was present on the Zoom meeting on April 28th and listened to every, everything that was said. One of the main things said at least twice that night was that the city was wanting to have a community meeting with the residents that currently live in this neighborhood, which was extremely comforting and welcoming to hear several times over because we all know that a development will inevitably become part of our neighborhood and hopefully, if done right, will fit, it fit right in nicely and enhance our community. In the present situation of COVID-19, what we all, what we are all now in social isolation, the whole world seems to be trying to communicate through the Zoom platform, which I am hearing that most school-aged children, let alone adults, are finding this form of communication to be very difficult to embrace. When it comes to having meaningful conversations with all parties involved in making a decision this large that will impact this neighborhood and our entire community to the north of us forever, I am asking you to please postpone this major decision until we have the ability to have proper and personal communication between the city and the residents of this neighborhood and definitely not through an online Zoom meeting. Also, not to be whining, but in the previous meeting, the developer said many, many, many times that this was a project that was already approved by the city. Considering that the developers truthfully asking for more units with more vehicles creating more traffic does not make this the same previously approved project in the minds of citizens affected by this development. Development should enhance a neighborhood and in our neighbor, neighboring neighborhoods, not hurt them. That alone, I'm hoping speaks volumes to you. And hopefully you will postpone this matter until we can have the opportunity to have an in-person meeting with our neighborhood members to try to come up with solutions to bring to a proper in-person community meeting with the city without technical difficulties that would help this development fit nicely into the neighborhoods of Glenwood Springs. Thank you for your time. Signed, Erin Lee.
The next comment is from George Dana. To Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission and the Glenwood Springs City Council. Topic Triumph Development West LLC Project at Blake and Palmer. The City of Glenwood should deny the Triumph Development West apartment proposal and project. We have no responsibility or commitment to provide housing for people to live here and then get in their cars or on a bus to go to their jobs in Carbondale, Eljebel, Basalt and Aspen. The majority of occupants would travel out of town for employment. This project would be denied, should be denied for the following concerns. Number one, the project is too large. Six buildings, 100 units, 150 to 200 people, simply overwhelming for five acres on steep land. Number two, not enough parking. 148 parking spots is not enough. For example, Oakhurst Townhomes has two spots for each of the 36 units and that is not nearly enough. Blake and 26th Street are always full of people's access vehicles. Number three, inaccurate traffic flow situations. Almost every afternoon traffic on Highway 82 slows and backs up from Walmart into Glenwood. Many vehicles turn right onto 27th to Blake North or east on 26th to Palmer the North. These trips all lead to Blake North at the same time on the, time all of the Valley View employees are getting off work. Add to these all the vehicles turning right onto 23rd to go north on Blake and more vehicles from this new development to determine realistic traffic numbers in these neighborhoods. Number four, inadequate flood debris control. The last high flood decades ago saw boulders as big as cars come down and damage Oakhurst Townhomes. No flood control fence could stop this. Number five, water flow problems from parking lots and sidewalks. No control plan is in place whatsoever. Where will this water go? It will go onto private properties on Palmer and down 26th to Blake. There are already a six-inch deep gully on the south side of 26th, the top third of the street, where inadequate repair of the street happened after a new electric line was replaced years ago. The water goes down to 26th and Blake where it forms a huge, in parentheses, almost impassable, end parentheses, debris-filled puddle. Number six, no fencing plan. There should be fencing completely around the development to prevent trespassing to and from Oakhurst and to keep people from their homeless camp out. Number seven, light pollution from parking lots and buildings coming into, right into Oakhurst homes. No amount of landscaping could stop this. Fencing might help where cars park. Number eight, there was no landscaping plan provided. Number 10, noise pollution from 150 to 200 people is a huge concern. Number 10, homeless people problems for the people living in the neighborhood or in the development. We have had problems with noise, dogs, fires, drugs, theft, trespassing and soliciting in the past. The results would be a big increase in police, fire and ambulance calls from people in the development. Number 11, new sidewalks on Blake 26th or Palmer. Pedestrians and bicycle riders coming out of complex would have to walk or ride in the already too narrow streets, causing an already dangerous situation to escalate. Number 12, snow removal problems. The city makes one or two snowplow passes on the above-mentioned streets and on 23rd. This results in snow buildup on the sides of the streets, making them even more narrow and dangerous. Number 13, steepness of 26th Street. After snowstorm, snow and ice buildup especially, in parentheses, especially in the early morning hours and after dark, end parentheses. This steepness makes it impossible for many cars to make it up to Palmer. They have to back down or turn around to go back down. Very dangerous. Number 14, not enough parking for the 27th Street bus station. Many riders are already parked on Blake, 26th, Palmer, Walmart, The Rivers Restaurants, et cetera. More people from the development, more problems. Number 15, engineering building problems. Just like Ironbridge, the terraces, the meadows and lofts, Red Mountain, Oakhurst and the recently amended sold city MOC building, the site will have stability problems the engineers may not be able to alleviate. Number 16, this area has always been a, in quotes, wildlife sanctuary zone, end quote, providing an area of protection for many, many species of mammals, birds, reptiles, insects, et cetera. Also, there are a wide variety of trees and plants there. Number 17, who will live in this development? If Triumph Development could rent units only to people who have jobs in Glenwood, like hospital, medical employees, first responders and other city employees, school district employees, county employees, restaurant bar workers, business employees, recreation-related employment, et cetera, in quotes, anything in Glenwood, end quote, then maybe we could support this development. But this would not be legal, so we should not support this project. Remember that a majority of the people living there would work in other towns. But this would not be legal, so we should not support this project. Remember that a majority of the people living there would work in other towns. In conclusion, please remember that these out-of-town developers from the Eaglevale area have purchased this land at the lowest cost available to them. They will develop it with the incentives to keep costs as low as possible for their investors. This may not correctly addressing, they, this may include not correctly addressing all the problems and issues that exist with the development. In addition, their rental rates will be as high as possible. Keep in mind their job is to maximize profits for their company investors. Please protect the citizens of Glenwood Springs from unnecessary development that would result in higher costs to our already constrained budgets. Please vote not, to not approve this development from Triumph Development West LLC. George Dana, resident of Oakhurst Town Home.
Next comment is from Lynn Carey. I had sent this email for the first P and Z meeting on April twenty-eighth, which Trent said was included in the packets for the P and Z members. My comments were never mentioned at the meeting. I have a couple of more items for tonight's meeting. The developers are from out of town and have never seen normal traffic on Highway eighty-two, Grand Avenue at five P M. No one from this development will take the highway to get to city market. They will take Palmer to Twenty-third to Blake. Also, one of the developers said maybe they would have a dog wash. Are they going to allow pets? Thank you for your time. And in regards to the previous comment that she sent on April twenty-second, I have seen the post concerning the request for variances by Triumph Development on Palmer Avenue. Public notice and post independent on April fourteen and twenty-first, twenty twenty, and sign erected at Twenty-sixth and Palmer on April seventeenth for public hearing on April twenty-eighth. The entire country, including Glenwood Springs, is under a stay-at-home order. I don't think that people are aware of your posts with a very short timeframe. I feel that this request for variances should be postponed until the stay-at-home order is lifted so that neighbors who are affected by this development can visit in person. I have lived at twenty-four oh-five Palmer longer than any other person in this area and certainly understand the neighborhood. I have read the request for variances and nowhere is the traffic pattern addressed. How do all the vehicles access the development? Where is the map and where is the sight view of the building's park parking lot, dumpster locations, lights, et cetera? Directing traffic up Twenty-third Street and down existing Palmer Avenue is not acceptable. There are more than ten grade school or younger children who live on Palmer Avenue, Crestwood Drive. After the original development was approved, the developer was to meet with the city to arrange to install, gave added expense on a Palmer to the south of the spec property. It would be able to be opened by first responders only. We were told that these apartments would be rented at market rates with no restrictions on how many people could occupy each unit, so it is not, will not be cheaper than overpriced existing units. Increasing the density and not having adequate parking will certainly cause many future problems. Just because it is close to the bus station is certainly no guarantee that people will not have at least two vehicles per unit, even a one-bedroom, or even ride the bus. I hope you will answer my questions and address the concerns of the neighborhood. Thank you. Lynn Carey.
The next comment comes from Scott Kramer to the Planning and Zoning Commission. First of all, I would like to convey thoughts brought forward from the last proposal. All of the residents of Palmer Avenue have been adamant that our street's infrastructure is completely inadequate now. Never mind to handle more traffic as there are no sidewalks, curb, gutter, et cetera. All foot and bike traffic travels on Palmer Avenue, drive, on the Palmer Avenue driving lane. When the Blake Gate is opened and the section of Blake Avenue made one-way, Highway eighty-two commuters will and always have get, get around rush hour gridlock by using Palmer Avenue at Twenty-seventh and Twenty-ninth Street access points. Palmer Avenue already experiences speeding commuters for years now. This dangerous problem will be vastly worsened due to the city's decision on Blake Gate slash one-way Blake Avenue. Commuter slash shopper traffic is unacknowledged by the city and traffic experts. Their expert traffic manuals and numbers notwithstanding, we see this dangerous speeding commuter traffic every day. During the previous application process, the city's traffic flow people met with a group of Palmer Avenue residents. We were basically told that the city was more interested in moving commuters through our neighborhood and to their destination than in our unsafe infrastructure and increased traffic concerns. Connectivity, our impression from city staff member comments at the four-twenty-eight Zoom meeting this week is that this policy remains intact. This sure doesn't jive with the city's stated goal of preserving small-town quality of life. All north-south-oriented neighborhood streets are evidently exempt from deserving of quality small-town living. We are promised solutions to this, but our trust in that happening is beyond low. We proposed a fire gate at north end of New Palmer Avenue to give the new neighborhood a quiet, safe neighborhood for their kids, free from speeding commuters as well as preserving our town. Our, sorry, is preserving our own. It seems such a simple solution that still keeps everyone safe. This was denied. One current resident south of that gate was opposed as well. Vague promises of traffic calming efforts ring hollow. We invite you to pull up a lawn chair and join us to watch commuters and shoppers speed through our neighborhood every afternoon and evening. Once New Palmer Avenue is improved and paved, Blake Gate is open and sections of Blake are one-way. This dangerous behavior will only worsen on an unsafe street full of little kids on bikes, owners walking their dogs or walking to from work and school. Secondly, I wish to comment on the new development proposal itself. Generally, I consider it well-thought-out in many important aspects and an important and an improvement over the original proposal. Additional housing provision is an important regional goal. My one serious concern is about Building F and its extremely close proximity to the existing Oakhurst condos. The separation is very minimal. All three floors of Building F will look directly over the fence and right into those homes, tiny yard, and windows. These condos only have their small backyards for privacy as front views are driveway, street-only. In addition, the one-point-three-eight parking spaces variance based on proximity to Rafta per unit is woefully inadequate. Use of vehicles to get to work retail is different matter than ownership of vehicles. Proximity to Rafta may encourage or solve getting to work, some shopping without the use of car, but does not eliminate car, truck, ownership needs for many other aspects of life. Two-bedroom units will have roommates as often or more often than one family to working parents due to rent costs. There will be two vehicles owned per unit if they are not used daily to get to jobs. Where will they park? Along old and new Palmer Avenue, if leases limit number of vehicles, where are additional already-owned vehicles going to park? Would applicant consider eliminating Building F, twelve units, to allow additional parking and eliminate crowding into onto Oakhurst Condos' privacy? Would one of the other buildings expand in design to capture some of the eliminated Building F units? E.G. Building A, eighty-eight units, is still a big addition to the cities, to the city housing pool. Provide new housing units but help preserve, quote, "small-town quality of life," end quote, for existing and future homeowners? Thank you for your consideration. P and Z commissioners have asked and addressed many of our concerns earnestly, and we appreciate that. Sadly, it seems city council and city staff are happy to ignore those concerns and even denigrate our public comments as a waste of their valuable time, to quote Councilman Gottes during the original application approval process. Out of that apparent disdain came a sudden vote to open Blake Gate at end of construction of the original development proposal. We were totally blindsided by this unexpected and unannounced, but likely previously planned decision. It was a disheartening at best. It was a disheartening at best and very angering experience for all of us who attended that public meeting and had worked to open discussion with staff and council up to that point. That's the end of those comments.
Great, thank you very much to staff.
Oh, there's one.
Oh, one more?
One more. Four-twenty-nine, twenty-eight, ten P M. Planning Department, P and Z City Council. I'm not sure who to address this question to, but after last night's Zoom meeting, four-twenty-eight, and today visiting with my many members of the Palmer Avenue Concerned Citizens. Number one, how come this proposal is being ram-rodded through in two meetings over seven days? In the past, it was always a month-to-month schedule. Number two, many people tried to get through to make comments last night but were either unsuccessful or didn't understand how to access the Zoom platform. Number three, a few of the folks I talked to heard comments to the fact that there is very little opposition this time. Asterisk, this couldn't be farther from the truth. Asterisk. I encourage them to put their thoughts in writing and get those thoughts to City Hall. Number four, the developer has a huge advantage by the Palmer-Blake Crestwood neighborhoods' confusion and lack of correspondence with each other during this COVID crisis and very, very short timeframe in which to respond after the initial four-twenty-eight meeting. They must be very happy with this format. Very frustrated. Scott Kramer, twenty-five oh-one Palmer Avenue.
And that concludes the written comments? Yes, it does. Excellent, thank you, guys. Thanks to the public for submitting your comments. I will move over to the attendees and again, I would like to say that if you spoke last time, last week, or submitted a written comments, please only raise your hand if you have additional new comments that you'd like to, like us to hear. That said, I was clicking around a little bit and I think I made a mistake. I put Trish Kramer to the bottom of the list and I know she was up next. So if you're still wanting to talk, please raise your hand. And I'll let you, I'll let you go. I know you spoke last week. If you have additional comments, please go ahead. And you are not raising your hand, so we'll move on to Frank Martin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Frank Martin. I live at eight oh-five Crestwood Drive. Point of disclosure, I am married to Glenwood Springs City Councilor Paula Stepp. Part of this meeting. And she has strictly avoided talking to me about this proposal. So these are my comments. I simply echo so many of the comments about Palmer Avenue. I walk my dog down there virtually twice a day. It's inadequate. I would like to reinforce that. There are a number of new young families in the neighborhood, a lot of, lot of kids, and it's, it's a delightful neighborhood. And, and the thing I want to leave you with is, is this concept that is really kind of a point of friction and, and having witnessed the bridge closure and as the traffic kind of found its way coming through Palmer and getting worse and worse, it reached a threshold. And, and, and it exacerbated to the point where neighbors were yelling at cars and on several occasions, neighborhoods congregated in the middle of the street as human traffic calming devices glaring at cars and as, you know, requiring them to slow down and at at least one point actually parked their cars and trucks in the road. So, you know, it's the, the concept of protecting a neighborhood is, is very, very genuine and very, very personal and very rare, real. With that, I just thank you for serving. I know it's a, these decisions are difficult and they're time-consuming, but thank you for the P and Z commissioners and, and city staff working on this.
Thank you very much. And Jamie Rehal. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Jamie Rehal. My address is twenty-three fourteen Palmer Avenue. I wanted to bring something new to the table as far as the Transportation Commission met this morning at the, sorry, the Glenwood, City of Glenwood Springs Transportation Commission met this morning. And we're kind of let me see, try to collect my thoughts properly here. Basically, I think they would be a great place for a lot of these discussions based on traffic and streets and whatnot. They have wonderful expertise as does the city in, in various departments. So I would love a continuance just to, to try to get the neighborhood and various city departments together and try to come up with a compromise and solutions that can work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And Shelley Lot, you're up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, Shelley Lot, nineteen Oakhurst. I was thinking about, the, the biggest problem is the, the, the roads of Twenty-sixth, Twenty-seventh, Blake, and Palmer in the area. And if, obviously, we're not going to be able to stop development. It must happen. But what if we took those streets out of the equation? If they're going to come in, if we're going to open the Walmart Bridge, couldn't that be the access for that development? And then just have a cul-de-sac at, at the top, making a Palmer and Twenty-sixth not accessible for this development? That they literally will go in and out through the Walmart gate, avoiding the, putting more pressure and safety concerns on Twenty-seventh, Twenty-sixth, Blake, Palmer. That, that could solve a lot of the problem. That was just my thought.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's see, Laura Speck. Please state your name and address for the record. I understand you probably have additional comments.
This is Elaine Speck, twenty-five oh-six Palmer. I just wanted to mention one other thing. Evidently, in the paper today, there was a notice that said that the county commissioners have decided to postpone all major decisions because of the inability for public input at this time. And so I'm just, again, requesting that everything be tabled, postponed for a while, and can some of these many issues that we have discussed this evening can be resolved in some way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And we're moving on to Annie H. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. First of all, my name is Annie Hoaghough. I'm at six-seven-eight County Road one-twenty-seven. That's Three Mile Road here in Glenwood Springs.
Thank you.
I do own my property at five-nineteen Easy Street as well. So although at the moment I'm a county folk freeloader, I do plan to be moving back to my Easy Street residence before, well, ideally within two years' time. So, speaking from the Easy Street perspective, I like happy neighbors. That's why we call it Easy Street. And clearly, this development with its high density and, and to clarify too, it's not considered affordable or for lower-income people. It's for middle-income people. But, but clearly, my neighbors up on Palmer Avenue are extremely distraught about the impacts to them. The Oakhurst people are distraught for the impacts to them. And of course, Blake Avenue, which Easy Street comes, comes out on to. Yeah, it's, it's a really inadequate situation there. I did live on Easy Street when my daughter was in kindergarten and first grade. And we walked along that section of Blake Avenue and I was actually very grateful for the potholes and rocks and rolls. and, and general chaos on that street because it did slow people down a little bit. But, but yeah, I also recognize that with the one-way plan on Blake Avenue, Easy Street is spared some of the increased traffic that, that Palmer Avenue will get. So it's occurred to me that I'm like, oh wow, at least I live on Easy Street, not on Palmer because we're not going to have the, the same magnitude of impact that they will up there. But anyway, my other question is that I'm still a little confused about just how grandfathered in the developer is on this project. Are we just discussing the, the two variances that they applied for? Or are we able to, to debate the bigger project? So anyway, it seems like there's a lot of discussion about the bigger project and whether or not that should move forward. So, so I'm hoping that's the case because the developer did kind of indicate that, that so much of this was already a done deal. So at some point, I would appreciate a little clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do see some phone numbers without a name. And correct me if I'm wrong, is it star nine? Star nine, if you would like to talk, please raise your hand or I can call on you. Not sure how we're going to do this. It is a phone number ending in 7493. Are you here to talk about this? Hello? 7493, are you here to comment on this application? Apparently not. We'll move on. I see phone number ending in 3132. Are you here to talk about this application? Comment? No, thank you. And now I got to make sure I don't repeat myself. 2872 ending, are you here to comment on this application?
Hello? You there?
Yeah, who's talking? What's, what's your?
My name is Dave Mailorn. I'm at 2407 Palmer Avenue. You've already read a statement of mine, which I appreciate. It sounds like there's unanimous opinion that this should not go forward without more, more conversation. And I would suggest maybe a continuance like Garfield County has done until we can gather as a community and see if we can't work through some of these problems. So thank you guys. I really appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Are you, what's your phone number ending in?
2872.
2872, thank you very much. And let's see, the last phone number I have is 5463. Are you here for this application? 5463. I see the screen being gray, so I'm not sure they're even on the line anymore. Okay, great. We'll move it on. Let's see, I also have another hand up and Cody. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, my name's Cody Lyden. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, excellent. I live on 2415 Palmer as well as my wife and my 16-month-old son. And yes, I don't have anything more to add other than, you know, I agree 100% with a lot of these concerns, especially having a young family in this neighborhood. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is anybody else in the attendees list that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. This is your chance. If I see none, I will close the public portion and invite the applicant to the panel to see if they would like to respond to some of the concerns and comments they heard from the public. And whoever wants to go first, please raise your hand and I'll, I'll chime you in. Michael O'Connor, please.
Yeah, Mark, thank you for inviting us. And I was wondering, is there, is there a way that we could share my screen like we did last time? Like promoting me to a panelist?
I think I can promote you to panelist, which I think I did. And
And then likewise, Mike Foster and then Stephanie Copeland and I think Greg Schroeder, he's, he's on the line as well.
So let me get you over. If you want, if you want to get going with your, with your screen sharing and whatever you want to say, then I'll, I'll get everybody else in here and we'll go.
It, it sounds good. I'll, I'll start things off and I don't think Mike Foster is going to need to share screens, but he'll jump in here in a little bit and, and, and talk about some of the slides here, but I can continue to control it.
Okay.
So, you know, getting started, thank you to staff and then the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission for having us here just one week later from, from our initial, from our initial presentation. And thank you for accommodating the additional public comment in this unique format of, over the course of a week rather than one night. I think anybody who's been paying attention to the, to the deliberations here would say that there's been pretty ample opportunity for public input and certainly enough information presented for the P and Z to give us feedback and even make a decision, especially in light of the fact that this is not the final decision on the application. So we look forward to hearing what, what you have to say about the plan. You know, I, that's some of what we've heard in those letters and tonight, you know, there's some allegations that were just not, not accurate. The idea that this is going to be some, a poor quality or income controlled development is, is not our intention. So, and, and you know, questions of engineering items. I think our application is pretty thorough in those regards as it relates to engineering and debris flows. So I'll let that speak for itself. I do have Greg here to talk about traffic to the extent that we have. You all have any questions about the methodology that was used? And you know, the traffic situation is something we have considered seriously and we'll address, we'll address in a little bit. You know, I guess in general terms, you know, so much of what we heard tonight was worry about the existing conditions of the neighborhood. The streets, the proximity to 82. It's not necessarily the impacts of development other than, but for the fact that we need to construct Palmer Avenue. And you know, those existing conditions of the neighborhood are not anything that is caused by this development. But I also want, think it's worth pointing out, you know, this, this property is zone residential transitional because of its location on the edge of the neighborhood and also, you know, primary traffic and pedestrian circulation is going to be out of the neighborhood immediately down to 82 without going through the neighborhood. So now hopefully, and, and that said, we're certainly willing to participate in conversations about how we can improve that plan, you know, improve the safety of Palmer. You know, I don't know if we have to have the final answers to all of that other than continue to participate in discussion about those things because they are existing conditions. And I, and I hear people's concern about those items. And perhaps there are some solutions that we can agree upon. But you know, I, most of what we've presented, you know, is the, is, I think the merits of the development, the zoning that, how it meets the zoning that is in place, the few variances that we're asking for are really in reaction to the site itself and some of the constraints of the site itself. And it's been a thoughtful consideration of improving an existing plan that we could pull a building permit off. So you know, that, that is, you know, that's always the backdrop here. But I think we're trying to improve the, improve the plan and, and be good neighbors at the same time. So, you know, going through a couple of slides here that are items that are, again, these are the people here from the team. So if you have questions for anybody, whether it's civil design or landscape design or traffic engineering, feel free to, to, to reach out to these people. The items that we are going to try and cover here tonight are some of the things that we heard last week and then also in the public comment. So quickly running through these, you know, the restricting public access to the uphill open space, neighborhood traffic impacts, we have some thoughts there, parking counts and management. The, the site sections that you asked us for, that Trent brought up quickly. Mike Foster can jump in and talk about a little bit. Controlling trespassing through the neighbors' properties. The pedestrian circulation and Palmer Avenue typical sections. We have a few, a little bit more information on that for you and the adequacy of those systems. We believe the green building elements and the EV charging stations. There were some questions about material samples and colors, so Mike has some more information on that for you. And then the Palmer Avenue construction and what needs to happen with that, with that spec driveway? And just a little bit of information there. I know there's a good solution and there's a couple of different options. I just don't want anybody to be worried about that. And then finally, just the compliance with the zoning, which I'll quickly go over. You know, we, we heard a lot of worry about, you know, uphill access to the area, the open space and the BLM land behind us. You know, I, I think for, for that one concern of the neighborhood, I think the development of this parcel is going to be solve most of that. You know, from the minute the construction fence goes up, the access up into that is going to be very difficult. So, but, but even then, after that, we've got, I think, let me get a highlighter here to, to highlight a few things for us. You know, we've got retaining walls as we need to drop the grade of Palmer Avenue to build it to the city's engineering standards. There's going to be a series of retaining walls this entire width. And at the same time, there's a debris flow fence that needs to go in along here. We're going to be creating some barriers that, that are discouraging access to those uphill spots. But maybe most importantly, there's going to be a property manager down here whose job it is to make sure that people aren't trespassing and that this, this, this apartment community is one that we're proud of. So you know, I think that, that's going to be a very nice improvement for, for, for the neighborhood. You know, next, the traffic study. I've, I invited Greg to, to, to talk about some of the conclusions of this. But you know, so, so I'll let him jump in here and talk about some of the engineering studies. You know, certainly the traffic is the big concern. But the punchline here is the traffic impacts of our project are very minor to the neighborhood. So Greg, if you're there, please feel free to jump in.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, the commission, for letting us have this chance to address some of these comments. You know, I think as Michael mentioned before, you know, we are, we're talking about the, the same, you know, configuration that's in the currently approved development plan. And you know, we've also, we do actually have, you know, a C dot access permit, which we have received. And then you also recall from our last week's meeting how we talked about, even though the number of units has increased, our, our traffic volumes actually have slightly decreased. And that was due to the fact that we're using a multi, excuse me, the bid rise, multi-family category. And so basically, that's why we, we saw that slight decrease in the number of vehicle trips that, that happened. The other thing I also wanted to point out is, you know, we have, there's been a lot of discussion, you know, a lot of the public comment addressed things that you guys are making numbers up and you know, this is, you know, we don't believe these, these values here. I want to point out that, you know, we as professionals, we, we produce these reports, you know, based upon the, the accepted industry standards. We are licensed professionals and we are required, you know, by our ethics to do these things the proper way. And I also want to point out that all of these traffic studies have been peer reviewed, not only by your city engineering staff, but also by C dots, again, who have licensed professionals that review these things. And my understanding is everybody has concurred with all of our, of our recommendations and our conclusions. So I wanted to point that out because I know that, quite honestly, this is not meant to be a joke, but everybody's a traffic engineer because everybody can drive a car. And I think a lot of people, you know, have very, very strong opinions because of that. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, we, we really, you know, do take the time to study it, to, you know, gather existing data and make sure that we have, you know, the best possible information than we, as we can put into our traffic sense. And then the last point I'd like to go ahead and just reemphasize and leave you with is, this kind of talks about the different scenarios between the one-way configuration of Blake Avenue as well as the gate open or gate closed opportunities. And I want to point out that, you know, we have in, you know, in this, this application, you know, worked closely with the city in producing many different scenarios, every possible scenario you could think of. Gate open, gate closed, gate open with one way, gate closed with one way. We presented all those options to the city and the city council as well as the city engineering staff at this present time feels that the, the gate open with the one-way configuration is the one that they want to pursue. So I think, you know, I don't want to put words into the city's mouth, but you know, that was the direction that was given to us fairly clearly from the 2018 approval. And so that's the direction that we're going forward at this time. You know, we do, again, all of our previous studies do have all those different scenarios modeled and they definitely can be reviewed and understood. So I just wanted to point that out and that's, that's kind of the end of my presentation right here.
Thanks, Greg. So moving on to the neighborhood and the traffic impacts, I mean, the, the, we brainstormed ways that, you know, we could try and address some of the concerns and thought about a lot of things. I mean, could you make one-way with Palmer? And these are, to be clear, we, these are ideas that we have not talked about with the engineering department very much. But, but have had some general conversations with them on, you know, tight restrictions like this. And they're, and they're, and my understanding of that is they're not favorable to controlling directions on public right-of-way. The right-of-ways are just that, they're right-of-ways. But options that we certainly could consider, you know, one-way Palmer Avenue through the site, possibly southbound. You know, that is, that is not the best thing for residents. I don't think it's the best thing for the neighborhood just from a circulation pattern, but it certainly is an option. You know, that said, some kind of traffic barrier at the top side of the site that, that discourages traffic and you know, it really doesn't make it, you know, through traffic through the site. Again, that's impeding the movement of traffic and it kind of goes against the engineering standards. It certainly is something that we could continue to discuss if that's one, if that is direction that, you know, both the neighborhood and the, and the city's engineers agreed with and, and we would be willing to consider. But you know, generally, and I think even some of the public comment identified that some kind of control in that neighborhood has been considered in the past and turned down. But also traffic calming techniques along Palmer Avenue, right? Signage, speed humps even if that's acceptable. Lanning it so that you bring the widths or the perceived widths of the, of the traffic down. I know is a successful technique that's used in a lot of spots. All of those things are things that we certainly would consider easy to incorporate. You know, I, I can't fix the configuration of Palmer Avenue to the north of us or any of the streets really for that matter. But, but, but we can be part of the solution and, and set the tone for what happens through Palmer Avenue. And maybe those ideas can carry through to Palmer Avenue. So, so those are all options that I think we would be willing to consider. And you know, and, and as far as suggested next steps and the possible condition of approval from the planning commission, you know, what I would ask is approve the plan as currently approved because we could pull a permit on the current development application with just that. But require the applicant to work with staff on those traffic calming techniques along Palmer. The, uh, the the next item here, so so that's that that's kind of our conclusion on what we're asking for the planning commission to do along Palmer. And then the traffic, the traffic situation there. You know, as it relates to, um, the parking, you know, I think it's worth pointing out that one, you know, we're not, we we are not asking for a variance from the town code. The town codes allows the the parking a hundred requires a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces when you're this close to transit. And we've gone back and studied the site plan and added, found a way to add, um, a few more spots. So a hundred and fifty total parking spaces is so we think we can fit onto the the, um, plan. And and that is not a variance. We're fourteen spaces in excess of what the code requires. But, you know, and and the examples of Oakhurst Town Homes and their parking situations, this is a different situation. This is a apartment community with onsite management. It's controlled by leases. And and there's somebody who's in charge of making sure that that situation is managed and controlled on a daily basis. And, you know, private rented homes or a townhouse community that are individually owned and then rented, they just don't have that type of management. But w- we can and will have a parking management plan, um, that that our onsite manager can control. So leasing, uh, leases that, um, specify the number of cars that each resident has and the is and assigning parking spaces to people with numbered parking spaces. And the management tools, um, for for controlling things that are like leasing, charging for extra parking spaces is how we encourage people who have households that are, you know, that are transit oriented to, uh, to to live here. You know, I think the counts are are more than sufficient than our apartment communities that we've development developed. Greg has worked on us on studying other spots and, you know, even parking in in apartment communities with this kind of access to public transit. One point two to one point four spaces is more than sufficient is actually what is used. So I I'm very comfortable with it, but the idea that we don't have enough spaces, I mean, I think we're if if you just count the number of one bedrooms and a parking space for a one bedroom and then the number of two bedrooms, um, that that we have, you know, it's if you said one space for every one bedroom, we've got one point eight spaces for every two bedroom. So, you know, I I'm I'm very comfortable with what we have. And, you know, I where the city of Glenwood has taken their code, you know, th- this is, this is best practices for planning in in places that have, um, housing needs and transit problems. Put the housing in density and infill spots next to next to transit. The next thing is, uh, mov- moving into the site sections, Mike Foster, you want to jump in here and take us through these?
Yeah, uh, hopefully everybody can hear me okay. Uh, last time we we were asked to, uh, show a couple of site sections and even blow up, uh, landscape plans at at three different areas. The the screen that Michael is sharing right now is the north parking lot, uh, that would to the west, there are the Oakhurst Town Homes. Uh, the bottom of the screen shows a, shows a section, uh, with the existing town home. Then, uh, the fence, the 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 line that comes up right from the fence is actually the property line. So the fence is right on the property line. Then there is a a ten-foot setback that we're adhering to. Underneath that setback is is a sewer line, um, that we cannot plant within ten feet of that sewer line. So even though there's not a a prescribed utility easement, uh, we're adhering to that. And that's why you see the landscape being pushed further to the right or to the east. Uh, we've got three retaining walls. This ranges from about ten feet to about fifteen feet in different areas along that north parking lot right there. And, uh, th- those walls will be made up of mechanically stabilized earth units or blocks that are intertwined or or can hold back the earth at those locations. Mike, if you can go to the next one, please. Uh, this one, we looked at it a little bit earlier where, uh, Trent had brought it up. Again, it's through the town home. You can see the fence, the property line. And there's a dimension on there, a dimension's a little bit hard to read, but it says it's twenty-three, almost twenty-four feet to the face of the building setback from the property line. That bottom level there is two units and, uh, those units are about two to three feet, depending on where the fence is really measured from, two to three feet above the base of that of that fence. Then on the second and the third level of this building, which is building F, there's also two units. So there's a total of six units facing to the west or or towards the Oakhurst Town Homes. Down there in the bottom, you can see where we've added some landscaping there. There'll be more large shrubs versus any trees. Because again, there there's a few different utilities that run along that that setback and even outside of that setback. So we're going to be limited on what we can, what we can install there, but we believe we can get some large shrubs to to buffer and to give that privacy. Mike, go ahead and go to the next one. Uh, the next one then is through the 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 main parking lot. And and what you see in the the plan above is the main parking lot and then the outline of the last couple of Oakhurst Town Homes. There, we've got about a a four to five-feet elevation change. Uh, what I forgot to mention on the other plan of the the north parking is we we've incorporated a forty, forty-eight inch tall solid wood fence, uh, closely matched the fence that the Oakhurst Town Home currently has. I think theirs is five or six feet tall. Ours would be, uh, forty-eight inches tall, setback about two feet from the edge of the parking. And then right on top of, again, this one, this wall's only going to be four feet or less. So this would be a boulder retaining wall instead of a mechanically stabilized, uh, wall. A- at this point, a- as we start to go further from from left to right or north to south, those utilities stop and they actually dive down the page or to the west, which then allows us to start to plant larger larger material that will give us more of a visual break between the townhomes and the parking itself. One of the questions I've heard or or things I've heard too is light pollution. So on on our parking right now, we we've called out for eleven light poles and that's throughout the entire project, only eleven light poles. We've tried to put them in locations furthest away from Oak Home, Oakhurst Town Homes so that they would light more of the of of the parking lot and the pedestrian ways. So we've got eleven pole-mounted lights and we've got eight ballards that that go around, uh, our sidewalks onsite. And then the buildings themselves will have lights, but all of those lights will be dark sky compliant. And so we've, we've, uh, positioned them in a way at the at the building entry and then we'll also adhere, like I said, to the dark sky compliance. All right, Mike, let's go to the next one.
One last thing on sheet, um, some, we we heard from the last time, some concern about people cutting through and trespassing on private property. Yeah, you know, basically that condition I believe exists right through, you know, here. And and so, you know, at the end of the Oakhurst Town Homes and even this 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 the single-family home here, you know, this configuration is a is a really good barrier to prevent that from happening. So, and really directing people to, um, the the pedestrian circulation that, the official sort of pedestrian circulation in the plan.
Uh, th- this shows a site plan and what I what I've tried to do here for everybody's benefit is to shade or highlight the sidewalks. So, uh, again, I've heard the long Palmer Palmer Avenue that we would not have sidewalk and and that is not true. As you can see here, from Twenty-Sixth Street, which is to the left or to the north, all the way down to where we tie into Blake Avenue, there's going to be a five-foot sidewalk on the on the downhill side or the west side that runs the continuous length of our property. On the uphill side or or on the south side, we've got sidewalk that goes from buildings B to C. And again, that's a five-foot wide sidewalk there as well. Then once you get down to Blake, we've, we've done, uh, we've, we've continued that sidewalk not only to the to the crosswalk to Rafta, but all the way down to the property line. And then going from Blake Ave-, or sorry, Palmer Avenue to the right or to the south, we'll take that all the way to the gate. Uh, down there at Blake Avenue, we're also doing some some road improvement. We're we're finishing the road. We're re-asphalting from our intersection to the south or to the right as it goes to the gate. So there will be some road improvements done down in Blake as as part of our, uh, construction as well. But again, just trying to point out that we've got a lot of internal sidewalks and we have sidewalks that, uh, the existing owners are are property owners to the north on Palmer could take that sidewalk and they would have a direct path to walk all the way to Walmart if they would so desire. Uh, the next one, and I'm going to go through these quickly, I know, because, um, th- this one has just a a quick section through Palmer. Last time we were asked about that, it it's it's twenty-four feet wide. And then we've got five-foot landscape islands on either side. And this is down closer to buildings B and C. So beyond the five-foot landscape, we've got five-foot sidewalks. So this shows sidewalks on both sides of Palmer. Like I said, it's down further to the south or in between buildings B and C. Green elements. Uh, so we are going for the National Green Building Certification on this project. Uh, we will be incorporating the the aspects for that. And then we'll also have an an energy score, energy code that we need to meet for for this project. EV charging stations, you can see there, that's right by buildings D and B. Uh, we we we're going to have the conduit, the infrastructure, and we've upsized our electrical services to those two buildings so we can serve EV stations and that would be the proximity of those stations. Uh, materials and sample boards. So got two different color schemes. We've got a color scheme number one, which are on buildings A, B, and F. And then I have a color scheme number two, which are on buildings C, D, and E. So buildings A and B, for instance, they're right across on one another at at basically the entry into the project. What I've done there is you can see we've got a color of, we've got siding, we've got a board and bat and all cementitious material. We've got a stucco base and then we've got, uh, metal accents. Uh, in in our gable dormers, we've got a a truss element that's right there. You can see a little picture of it in the center of the page. And then asphalt shingles. So between A and B, where you see, uh, horizontal siding on then B, that would be board and baton. Uh, on this one, where you see board and batten on building B, that would be horizontal siding. Same color palette, but just changing up the materials and where the materials are applied to the building. So this has a a color scheme and you can see it here. There's, the color scheme is up in the left-hand corner. And then, uh, I I've got a a little bit of a breakout here and I have all all these samples to to present. We've got the asphalt shingles, the siding color, you can see there, it's called a khaki brown. The board and baton color is a French toast brown. The metal accents accents is bronze, as well as the window br- window cladding is bronze. And then the stucco color i- is called out as as buckthorn on this, on the scheme one. Scheme two, uh, again, will be a lot of the same elements, but then with just different color patterns. Uh, again, a stucco base, we've got horizontal, uh, cementitious siding. I've got a board and batten siding and then with metal accents. Uh, scheme two, we have a little bit lighter color of a of a stucco that you can see there. And then the the siding, the the horizontal and the board and batten, again, it's a little bit lighter. I'll apologize where it says the metal panel color that, believe it or not, that was the color of of the panel I have. And it it's called out as slate gray. So when I give you the, you can see it there in the the upper left-hand corner, that that gray looks a little bit better in that in that photo than it does in the one below. Uh, asphalt shingles and it'll be the same vinyl window, uh, bronze color throughout all six buildings.
Anything else, Mike?
No, I think that's it. I wanted to keep it, uh, clean. If anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to ask me.
Sure. So quickly addressing the driveway for the for the, um, the specs home to the, just to the to the north of us. Here's a couple of pictures of the existing conditions out there. And, um, so you can see where the driveway currently comes in in this, uh, in the pictures and then overhead. And, um, you know, hard to say exactly what is overhead, but, um, that that parking spot for the truck, you can also see down in here. Looks like it's, um, possibly in our property right where a driveway could go. Quickly, and and, you know, this is, there's a couple of answered options here that I think is the the, um, is the good news. But, you know, the existing grade of Palmer Avenue, the of the existing grade here is, you know, this line. And you can see that the proposed grade of Palmer Avenue to meet the city's engineering standards is pretty significantly below that. You want it to be more gradual at the Palmer intersection and then begins climbing up and meets our driveway. And and the specs driveway is right here. So to meet those engineering standards, the driveway, you know, would need to meet a new road height. You know, ju- just like we are. And so what we are proposing is, you know, to accommodate that, we could easily get a driveway onto our property. We could pay to construct that for them, give them an easement for that access. So we're we're happy to do that, um, you know, at the end of the day. You know, you always could just leave the grade of Palmer Avenue the same until you get to their driveway and then pick up the engineering standards. But, you know, these these are details that we can work through and, you know, as far as a proposed condition of approval, we're happy to, uh, accommodate that and even, uh, bear the responsibility to do that. And so that Palmer Avenue can be constructed to the appropriate grade. You know, lastly, um, you know, people, um, we we heard quite a bit about how dense this is. And, you know, I I think the 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 town's code encourages mix it, mixtures of units in throughout, right? I mean, that's one of the requirements, it's one of the variances we're asking for frankly. Um, and and we have what will be a mixed-use community here. We'll have apartments, we'll have townhomes, we'll have single-family homes. You know, the 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 mix of units that the code i- is encouraging. And, you know, what we have in place from a zoning standpoint today is residential transitional zoning. It is just a hair below residential high-density zoning. And and both the zoning and the comp plan recognize this as an infill development spot. You know, would the the currently approved plan is just for, um, the the five-point-five acres. And what we have today, just as a reminder, is five-point-seven acres with the addition of twenty-seven-ten Blake to our plan. So it's a little bit additional property. Um, yes, we have a hundred units, but a hundred units is what's permitted by the zone. Um, we we've come up with a mix of ones and two bedrooms so that we satisfy the requirements that that we serve a a wider variety of household types. And even with the addition of the property, we've only increased the number of bedrooms by a few, um, in incorporating that mix. Uh, we we meet all of the setback requirements in many cases by 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 a wide margin. We meet the height requirements of the zone, the lot coverage and the landscaping, um, we we are well in excess of. And the proposed parking solution is in excess of code as well. There are a couple of variances that we went over last time, um, that the staff memo does an excellent job of talking about it. Our application covers them as well. But but just please remember that they, but they really have to do with the site conditions itself. Um, the steeper portion, the uphill portion of the site, we're trying to avoid development on. Particularly because Palmer Avenue has to drop in grade so much. And rather than throw in a tiny home or some other random use onto this property that would expand the footprint of development, uh, in particularly in light of the fact that we're already in a community, a neighborhood that has a mix of uses. We think a multifamily, you know, just the one use, the one multifamily use that has a mixture of unit types in it is is appropriate, given the site constraints and the desire to, um, you know, mi- minimize the footprint of development, particularly on the uphill more visible par- portion of the site. Finally, the, uh, the 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 variants for the, um, you know, parking internal to the site, the the current plan has the same condition, uh, the the site steepness and using the buildings to retain dirt rather than building retaining walls to retain dirt, you know, I think is a is a good planning concept. And particularly in light of what Blake Avenue is through here, you know, there's the Walmart parking lot to our south. There is, um, you know, kind of the parking areas or the rear areas of the retails to our we at west. There's even a a parking lot right along Blake Avenue for Rafta right there as well. So, you know, that's not like, um, it it it's an appropriate spot, I think, for for this, especially considering the site constraints. We went over these all last time, so I won't belabor it and we can get on to questions. But I do think we have a pretty significant improvement to the current plan. You know, this this current plan has been through the process and something that we could, we we could move forward on. We think our plan has, um, that has significantly improved that while continuing to honor the the commitments of the prior plan. And, um, you know, with with these additional applicant proposed conditions of approval, I think we're 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 ready to a- ask for not only your feedback tonight, but, um, it possibly even a vote. So I throw these out there as possible additional propose, uh, additional conditions of approval. The plan will include privacy fencing along the west side of the parking areas to screen headlights and discourage trespassing by pedestrians. The applicant will work with staff on the recommended traffic calming techniques along Palmer Avenue through development. And the applicant will work with the adjacent owner to the north on driveway access to their home, including construction of a new driveway entrance and easement on the applicant's property at the election of the neighbor. That's all I have. Um, happy to answer any questions if you have any and. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any, and thank you for your attention this evening.
All right, team, thank you very much for your clarifications and your answers. Before we get into the question and answer deal with the commission, I'm gonna call for a maybe seven-minute recess. Will reconvene at 9:13, 9:15, somewhere there?
Sounds good.
Thank you. And we're starting with Commissioner Shaver, please.
Thank you. To the applicant, I noticed on one of your images, you showed compact parking spots as opposed to standard size. What is the ratio of those?
I don't know what the actual ratio is. I believe I'm showing a total of 20. So out of the 150 spaces, 20 of them, so that would be 15%, I believe, is what I'm showing on this plan.
Okay. And to staff, I don't know who, I should direct this to. It's my understanding that when you pass a variance, it goes with the property in perpetuity. And I believe the previous approval had some number of variances. I don't remember the details. Do they carry on with the, if we were to pass this particular development and approve the variances that they have requested, do the previous variances also exist on this piece of property?
That's a good question, George. And actually, variance is when they're granted, they are granted with a site-specific development plan. So if you do not construct a project according to that site-specific development plan, those variances aren't necessarily still in play. So if this property, if you were to approve a variance associated with this site-specific development plan and another developer were to purchase the property, then yes, they would transfer to them based on that, that proposal, exactly.
Just, just specific to the design? So the previous variances are out the window once this, if this project were to be approved?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schacter, please.
Thank you. This would probably be for Greg Schroeder again, if you don't mind. Given, looking at the summary of traffic volumes that were brought up that you and McDowell put, and I believe a quote that there'd be virtually minimal impact on the existing neighborhoods. And I think the numbers projected for Palmer, 26, and even Blake North were pretty nominal. Given those numbers, and for the time being, for the moment, ignoring city staff desires for circulation. Would there be any reason, given those numbers you're projecting, Greg, that this development would only have access to 27th Street and 82, and Blake Roaring Fork Marketplace and 82? Since the impacts in the other directions are so little, would there be any negative impact to this development if those were the only ways people could get in and out of this new development?
So let me try to understand what you're trying to indicate. So what you're suggesting is that the traffic generation would basically not be allowed to go kind of north from the proposed site to access kind of the neighborhood? Is that what you're trying to ask, basically?
Right, exactly. The north access would terminate at 27th, would not include Palmer. So you'd have 27th and Blake and McDonald's as your access. Access and egress. Because I'm noting that the, you know, the frequency count that you're talking is pretty minimal going the other directions.
So I guess maybe the best way to answer that would be, what I'm hearing you suggest would be, instead of having basically two accesses to the site, basically a north, a north access and a south access for, to make it simplistic there. You're suggesting we only have a south access and all the traffic generation basically only go south over by Blake, over by Roaring Fork Marketplace, Walmart, everything like that.
No, they could still, I mean, if they chose to go jog north and then to 27th, they could get to 82 and go either direction as well.
Okay, so basically what you're suggesting is to kind of basically not have a north access there at Palmer. And okay, so I guess maybe the best way to answer that question would be, it kind of goes against, I guess, you know, engineering practices and kind of some of the city's planning practices to only have a single access point to a development because you've got emergency providers. You want to have some repetition in your roadway networks for whatever reason the roadway is closed, or you have maintenance or upkeep, et cetera. Or you want to have, your residents can have at least a second way of getting in and out. So I guess maybe the thought process there would be is, we've always kind of looked at it from using the street network the way it is, and we appreciate the fact that we have two points of access. And I guess, you know, if there was some further discussion with the city where they would, you know, be agreeable to that, I think we could definitely have that conversation.
All right, and, and again, I don't want to get into a debate with you here. It's very rare, and the fact that there's no circulation plan other than plugging into the existing neighborhoods is a concern. But again, we've already talked, and I think Michael mentioned, in terms of access in emergency, a radio frequency-controlled gate at the north end of Palmer would handle that. That wouldn't handle your resident access, but that, that is definitely doable from a technology point of view. And, and again, am I mistaken though, Greg? Regardless of the engineering principles and the, and the circulation principles, am I mistaken though in reading the numbers that the, the traffic flow you predict, even though it's nice to have more than one direction of egress and entrance, the traffic flow you're projecting is nominal at best?
It is very nominal. We're projecting the traffic volumes that are going to head north on, on Palmer Avenue there to be four and five vehicles per hour. So four vehicles per hour equates to one vehicle every 15 minutes.
15 minutes, okay.
Right, so because again, the majority of people, you know, coming into, from the site, especially with the Blake Gate open, are going to be most likely using the south access because that's just kind of the quickest access to where they want to get them to go. So that's where we said that makes sense. So we don't see a lot of that.
Right, I'm just worried, I'm looking for possible future solutions for a circulation plan that might more positively impact the five neighborhoods that are affected downstream from you. And also, I'm concerned about your belief where people are going, but I'm also concerned about traffic to and from downtown Glenwood at various hours. I had one other question, if I may, Marco. And I don't know if this would be for Michael or for Trent or both. Terms of open space requirements, it was clear in the proposal that it exceeded the number of feet. But I'm, I'm concerned, what's the requirement for active space? And I guess unless I'm reading it wrong, the only active space I saw was a tot park and nothing adult-oriented. I wondered if there are other provisions, are there trail provisions or something on the east side of the new Palmer Road? Or what, what am I, am I missing something there?
You know, I can take that first, or Mike, you can jump in. Mike, why don't you jump in on just kind of the outdoor space areas that we have in the plan? There's a number, I don't know if we can pull them up, but we could reference the, exist the plans if you have them in your package. Mike?
Yeah, so in building D, which is there in the center of it, we've got a community room. And the community room then has indoor/outdoor living. So we've got a patio. We're proposing an extension basically of that living space to the south and to the west out of that community room. And I think that's where you're referencing the tot lot as well. So we've got that area, and then we have an opportunity to gain, to gain. So we've got that area and then we have an opportunity to gain, to gain some space between buildings D and E in that small area there as well to recreate on the exterior. So those are, those are our two main areas for exterior. There was a question earlier about dogs too. And, and you know, we don't have a dog park. Pets will be allowed. We have two dog washes, one inside building A, one inside building D. There again, as an amenity or a use for our guests and our residents.
And then on the outside of each of the buildings, I mean, I think there's an opportunity for, you know, a community grills. I mean, there's like up to the, to the north of building A, to the north of building E, Mike, is it the northernmost building? There's, there's, there's so smaller.
I just wasn't sure and maybe I wasn't sure what qualified as active space versus passive and whether that met all the requirements. I do have one more question. I'm sorry, Marco, ever since Jessica's here. In terms of particularly in an area where, what was it, 77 or 78, we had such a massive mud flow area that destroyed a lot of the 26th Street residents over there in that area. And now they're spending, I assume, a fair amount of time and money on engineering and changing debris flow. What what indemnifies or what protects either the city, because we now have a city street that's going to run through there that's been technically theoretically never abandoned, but never used, and also all the neighboring residents? If, if something goes wrong and there's deflection to those other neighbors, is there any indemnification for the, for the city or for those neighbors in those existing neighborhoods?
So the, the engineering, well, I guess it's in the municipal code actually, requires the applicants to either certify that they're not increasing the hazard to neighboring residents. The engineer has to sign off and provide documentation of that. And/or provide mitigation methods. They're putting in the debris flow fencing. It's sized appropriately by their geo-hazard engineer who is stamping their report. The fencing does require maintenance. It does require inspections, which is a part of their. There's a maintenance agreement that they have to do with the city for the debris flow fencing and for all of the detention. So that if they, for some reason, are not maintaining it properly, the city could come in and do that and backcharge the property owner. But at this time, they've, they've removed the, the buildings that were in that hazard area while still putting in that debris flow fencing. So they're actually creating a situation that's far better than what has been there historically. And in general, our debris flows, the way the city's been laid out, the debris flows are mostly conveyed by the roadway. You know, obviously that historic flow is, it's a historic event. There's nothing that the, the city can, can really do to prevent that kind of event from occurring, but you can mitigate it.
So I guess the question, so regard, whether this is developed or not, is, and I don't recall, has the city taken some pretty significant mitigation steps to protect that existing neighborhood over the last 30 years, 40, 50 years?
No, I mean, those, those neighborhoods have built in a historic flood path. I mean, it's not the, all of that area was developed before these standards were in place. And, you know, Colorado water law is pretty, includes debris flow to some extent. And it, it's pretty clear that as long as you're not changing the historic flows or making them worse, you know, that's, that's the way it goes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioner Grosskopf, please.
Okay. Thank you, Marco. I have, I guess, maybe two for developer, Michael, and then a couple for city staff. So I'm curious to know the number of spaces in the north parking lot and specifically the number of spaces that are, I guess that'd be west or, you know, basically facing Oakhurst.
I'll answer that. This is Mike Foster. We've got 24 parking spaces in that north parking. And I believe that, I don't have it right up in front of me, but I believe about half of them are facing east and then half of them are facing west. So roughly 12 parking spaces are to the, to the downhill side or to the west.
Roughly 12? You mean 12?
Yeah.
And then the next question is more of a management, maybe, or just a more explanation, please, around, you know, I understand that you can do stuff through leasing and having onsite property management around parking and control. But I want to understand, you know, what are your thoughts, maybe experience driven or thoughts you've had about this particular application related to tenants who might park stuff, you know, in the adjoining neighborhoods because they haven't got the permission through the lease process to have an extra vehicle or whatever. And so, you know, somehow they're overcrowding. How would you think about that? Is there any ability you have to, to manage anything like that?
Yeah. I mean, I think there's quite a bit that can be done through leasing process. I mean, the last person who wants to have an unmanageable parking situation is us, right? I mean, we have to live with it every day. The manager who's in charge of leasing is the one who's also in charge of the parking. So you, you want to understand who your residents are. You want to understand how many people are living in a home. You know, you're not packing five and six people into a two-bedroom. So you definitely control the occupancy of the units. I mean, it's from a long-term wear and tear standpoint, it's better. You need to control that stuff. And then likewise, you know, understanding who, your cars and registering your cars, assigning parking spaces, providing stickers. I mean, it's just kind of the typical best practices for you know, specifying in the lease how many cars that you have and then assigning the spaces for those is what we have in mind here.
I'm sorry. Let me jump back in here. I miscount. There's actually 14 to the west. There's 10 to the east. So on that north parking lot.
And the west would be the 14 is going to face Oakhurst, right?
Correct. Yes.
14. And then Marco, I have a, you know, maybe it would go to Jessica or maybe Terry, a couple of questions. Just, and this is around just general conversation that we've been having this whole evening around traffic and challenges in this part of town with our streets and all that kind of stuff. So some of the questions are, I want to know what the speed of Palmer would be. Is it 25? You know, that's the default or would it be slower traffic speed? Should I go one by one or what's the best?
Catherine, it would be 25.
Okay. So 25 and is that what's on 26 right now?
Yes. It's 25 almost everywhere in town. There's just a few spots where we've labeled it less than that, but we plan for 25.
The reason I ask Terry is that the, one of the members of the public showed a slide that was 15. So I just wondered if that was somehow standard in this area, but you say 25. Okay.
Yeah. The only place I'm aware of a 15 mile an hour posted speed limit might be in front of GSES. I think we might've had a sign out there at one point, but I could be wrong. Jessica, can you think of any place else?
No, you know, it's hard for the PD to enforce below that, I think, because of the way the radars work. So it's, it's challenging for them.
Okay. So that's a question. And then do either of you, Jessica or Terry, do you guys know if, I mean, certainly it's a RFTA bus station and that's kind of driving the ability to have a situation with less than 170, 150 provided. I guess my question is, does the city bus circulate through there? So, you know, residents who might be using transit in our own community versus those using RFT to go in other communities, is, is that station used for our city bus?
Yes, it does. The ride Glenwood Springs turns through the BRT station.
Okay. Just thank you. And then I, I guess I had just a basic question about maybe Terry, you know, how, what are the long-term plans here? We're sitting in a situation with major budget changes in our horizon. But what are the plans for some of the improvements to the streets and curb and gutter sidewalks in this area? It really is, you know, been neglected over the years. It's a challenging place to do that work. But I'm just curious if, if it's possible to talk about anything planned.
And, you know, I was just texting Matt Langhorst a little bit about it, asking, you know, where Palmer ended up in our reconstruction scenarios. And of course, you know, since the street tax failed, Palmer really isn't on the list anymore. As our, you know, we only really have until 2026 until the street tax expires. So as of right now, we only have a few streets that are, we are planning to reconstruct. And one of them happens to be Blake between 23rd and 26th. As everybody's pointed out, it is in terrible condition and we do have, you know, some layouts for Blake for reconstruction there as well as both north and south Red Mountain. So did I answer your question? I'm sorry. I was.
Yeah, no, thank you. Well, so the Blake, I didn't know that. So that's, that's helpful. And I guess then Terry, maybe that, on the one a week ago, when Trent gave us his presentation, there was a comment about the city having a desire to, to hold a conversation on traffic. And certainly the revisiting of the existing decisions on the one-way and Trent, tell me if I'm doing this wrong, but the one-way on Blake and just open maybe a feedback session with city. And so would you want to talk about that, what you envision and how that might be? And help me understand that more.
Yeah. You know, from a staff standpoint, that is our, our preference. I would say that, you know, we, we don't really have the ability to control, you know, what the outcome of it is from the planning commission or from the council. But what my recommendation would be is that we have public meetings after this process is complete. And we talk to them about several different options. I think one ways could be part of that option, but I really prefer that we allow those streets to fully circulate. You know, as many people have pointed out, if we set Blake as a one-way, that means, you know, more traffic moves to Palmer. And I really feel that once we set a gate, you know, we're, we're indicating that that's really a private road. You know, if a gate were proposed in a new development, you know, for instance, like this one, if a gate's proposed on one end, you know, from a staff standpoint and from a maintenance standpoint, we start to think of that as, as a, you know, a private road. Those folks, you know, don't want any public use of it and, and therefore, you know, they should assume responsibility for maintenance of that facility. But, you know, these are existing conditions and I understand, you know, you know, gates are part of people's thinking about how to protect their quality of life. And I, I respect that, but I really would like to have a public conversation, both with the residents of Blake and Palmer, and consider different alternatives. We could talk about the one-way scenario. I would also like to propose, you know, traffic palming as well as, you know, some potential for.
What happened?
I'm still here. Is anybody else?
Oh, wow. I'm not sure.
It looks like all of the commission got booted and pretty much all of the attendees.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
It says 19 per participants. So maybe it'll bring everybody up.
No, it says eight participants.
11 panelists. So it looks like most of the commission got booted.
Starting to come back.
People are starting to come back in.
Yeah, it looks like there was an issue on the Zoom side of it.
Yeah.
Awesome.
It's like a fire alarm in a, you know.
Only we had an engineer to figure this out.
It's just interesting that it's all the commission.
That's strange. All right. I'll let you guys control the meeting.
Anybody there?
I am, Sumner. I'm back.
I just got on my phone, but I haven't got on my computer. And I guess I just got an email that the Palmer neighborhood's out. So this is not going to work.
Hi, guys. I'm, I'm here. What happened?
Oh, no. Internet went down. I'm on my phone right now. I got an email, I got an email from some people on Palmer that their internet got kicked out.
Oh, wow.
I'm not sure we can continue under these conditions.
Yeah.
Commissioner Schachner, if we can see you on video, your broadband must be working.
Yeah, I'm on my phone right now. I'm using.
I see on your.
I'm using cellular. Yeah. And I can't, I don't know how, and I've never used it on my phone. Let's see.
Jessica, you weren't kicked out?
No, it pretty much kicked out all of the commissioners. And left Mike, Michael, Stephanie, Catherine, Anna and I and Greg and Derek. Everybody else. And Alyssa was still on, but.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
There was an issue on Zoom's end or something.
I'll be darned.
No, my husband just said that the internet is out.
Oh.
It's not Zoom. It's, I think it's internet related.
Yeah, it's so weird that I zoom, but it's, you know, widespread for Glenwood potentially.
Yeah. Well, I'm in rifle, so that would explain why. Jessica, I'm in rifle too, but I got kicked out. Poor luck on your end.
Live on the wrong side of town.
So what do we do?
How many participants did we lose? Did we lose all the participants too?
I don't know. Marco was kicked out.
Yeah. There are still ten attendees on.
Okay.
He's calling. Marco's calling me right now.
Ralph Smalley is a participant that has his hand up.
I'm gonna see if I can get on again on the internet. What do we do, attorney?
Sorry. So let's, let's see if we can get Marco and Jen and then we can discuss.
Could they possibly call in?
No.
So Marco texted me.
Everybody?
No, no, the commi- the commissioner, since we're through the public comment part and, you know, to the commissioner question.
For the discussion, it seems like it's the, it's pretty important to have on there. What did he say, Ingrid?
I said that Marco texted me and asked, are you kicked out? And then I said, yeah, but then I'm back on now. And he said hello. And I said, can you get back on? And he hasn't responded. So, I mean, my, my cell phone, I'm actually using my cell phone as a hotspot because I initially thought it was just my wifi and all the devices that are being used. But my phone is working as a hotspot.
I'm just using mine right off, right off, from, right off Verizon. I can't get on wifi, yeah, which I don't want to do for very long.
I've got internet. I've got Ralph and Tug and I'm right locked down from Sumner, so. But I didn't get kicked off the meeting.
I mean, at, at a minimum, even if we're going to continue it, we need to get a quorum of the commissioners on the phone or, you know, so we can take some action, but otherwise, so I say just hang tight for a few more minutes.
Gretchen, one of the reasons I might not have gotten kicked off is I'm on my surface and it has cellular. Too. So it might have backed up to that.
We need Catherine.
I think Catherine, yeah.
And Marco. And Amber.
And Amber.
George. George, Amber.
And George.
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you that this is a regional outage of one of the major internet providers. I don't know if I'm allowed to say whom.
It's over here. Hey, Anna, can we do a vote by email for continuation?
We still don't have a quorum.
Well, we, if we did an email though.
I mean, there's nothing in the code that says, that talks about email. I mean, at a minimum, we'd, I think we would get them on the phone. Surely they could call in. Let's see. And we're, Jen?
What, and what's the numbers that was the number to call in? Was that included in that email we received tonight?
There was.
There's a whole series of numbers.
I mean, the other question is, when do we continue it till?
Yeah.
Well.
But if your, if your internet was out, there's no way you can see your email to see those telephone numbers.
Well, can't you look on your phone? Without, without wifi, you can, you could check your remit that way. Yeah.
I could text message them. I've got a majority of them. I could text them a picture of a phone number to call.
Gretchen, where, I mean, I, when, when would we even continue it till or just continue it and then figure it out? Do you have any thoughts?
I think we continue it and then figure it out.
Yeah, this is unexpected because.
But.
If, if perchance, we had decided to continue it as a matter of course of business, there probably would have been more specific conditions and information. This is more of an emergency. That doesn't, doesn't allow us to put any stipulations, I don't think, on the continuance, other than figuring out when.
Right.
Public comment had not yet officially been closed, had it?
Yeah.
Yes, it had.
It had been officially closed. Okay. Well, that's helpful.
Totally.
Yeah. Marco is on, Marco's on the line right now. I'm gonna leave and pick him up and see what's going on and have him call in. What's the best number for him to call in? Any of them on the screen will work?
Trent's on.
Correct. Any of them on the screen will work.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. Hi, Trent.
Hey, I connected via my cell phone.
Totally. That's what I did too.
My internet, my internet still seems to be working. I'm still on my laptop, but I'm in my office, so we have better internet here than I do at home.
Do you have city broadband?
I, I don't think we do at the office, but.
I was gonna say, I'm on Comcast. That might be the problem.
Yep, Roth, Roth.net, whatever it is now, Pathfinder.
Good, good thing Verizon gave me a bunch of free data this month. To help, to help me through the, through this COVID nightmare.
I am looking for the phone number. Has anyone heard from Jen?
I have not.
No, me either. So Anna, the next, I mean, the next regular meeting isn't until the 26th, but we can certainly see, send out a poll for the commissioners to see if people are available for a special meeting between now and then.
Is the agenda already pretty full for the 26th? I'm guessing.
No.
No.
Nope.
I'm just trying to figure out how we get the votes.
Right.
Okay.
Has anybody texted the commissioners, the dial-in information so they can call from their cell phones?
I think it is working on.
Yeah, I sent one to Marco, to Amber and to Catherine. I don't have Sumner's contact, I don't think. Let me check really quickly. Oh, Sumner, you're on.
I was on. Yeah.
Talk to Marco.
Yeah, and Marco supposedly was talking to Sumner. So I don't know who we are.
You sent it to Marco, so that's the most important.
We haven't got George either. Yeah.
And George. Yeah.
I don't think Terry will be able to call back in either because I don't know that she gets good cell service up there.
Okay, so Marco just texted me. He is calling from a phone number that ends in six, six, seven, three. If we can add him to the participant list, is that possible?
I'm on it.
Okay, six, six, seven, three. And then Amber's last four to be on the lookout. Her last four is nine, seven, seven, four, if she's calling in.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, who pulled the plug? Who was it?
It wasn't us.
There's no, there's no backhoe digging going on, I don't think. So no, no lines were severed in this, but who knows?
They'd like to do it in the dead of the night. You just never know.
Yes. So who are we missing still?
So we're missing Catherine. We're missing George and we're missing Amber. And then.
Okay.
Sumner needs to pop back. And Jen.
I think Sumner's in the attendees list if you want to bump him up. I saw his, I saw him under the attendees.
Okay.
Please remind me of the last move Amber's number.
Amber's last four. She's nine, seven, seven, four. She, she's not on there yet and nor is Catherine.
Or George. We have one, two, three. One, two. Where's, oh, Sumner, okay. I guess, I guess if you all vote, there's a quorum, but I mean.
Ingrid?
Yeah.
Do you have Catherine's phone number?
I've already texted her. I texted her both as a, yeah, as an iMessage and as a text message, just in case she's only getting text messages.
Right. My phone wasn't working either for quite a while. Now it's, it's working again.
And I'm also checking the attendees numbers to see if anybody that I know their last four is coming, calling in.
Okay, Catherine is eight, eight, four, zero.
She is, yes, indeed.
Okay, okay. Hey.
What?
Sorry, Anna, this is Trent. I was just gonna ask procedurally, since we have a quorum, could we use the group that's here to continue this?
Well, that's what I was thinking as well. I was counting.
And the, and the next hearing?
Except, except it's. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what else we can do.
Not so.
Other, other than, other than, I mean, I, I, I do think if we wait, like, not indefinitely, but a few more minutes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wait and see how many folks we can get on here.
Hey, uh, quick, the applicant.
Yeah, they're there. They're here.
Okay, can we ask them if they're okay with, with us voting, having a quorum at this point? Because this could go on for a while.
But it's not solely up to the applicant. I mean, it, it would help to have their.
We can't continue a meeting. We can't continue at a fair meeting like this.
Why not? You mean, you mean go on, you, you, you mean we can't proceed? You can continue?
No.
No, I think, yeah, we can't proceed a fair meeting like this.
No, no, no. I mean, I mean, you know, have a motion to continue the hearing, the application.
Yeah.
With the quorum we have, do you really have to have all seven of us here? If they're okay with it, maybe we can just do it and hope for better days.
And what we, we, would we be continuing until what date, Anna?
Well, that's what I asked as well. We could either continue it to the next regularly scheduled meeting that's in the end of this month, or Gretchen had suggested sending around a doodle poll.
I, I'd be in favor of a doodle poll, just to move this along because, well, you know, circumstances, I guess.
But, but we, we, we have to set it to a date certain tonight in order for it to be a continuance. So we can't just close the meeting and with the doodle poll. I mean, we could reopen it for next Tuesday after we've had the ability for a doodle poll, but we have to set it to a date certain.
Okay, I would, let's, let's do it for our next regular meeting.
Does the next application have to be re-advertised then?
Not if it's continued and it just picks up. I mean, that, that, that's why it would be nice to have a contin- a date. Because I think if there's a doodle poll, then we have to renotice everything.
And I, and I just wondered, because the next one, we still have a public comment, I believe.
What date are we, what date are we even talking about?
Next meeting is the 26th. The next regularly scheduled.
Okay.
Well, that's three weeks from now. That's kind of what my, my gut is saying is just to do it for the next meeting.
What bums me up, what bums me out a little bit? I know we're in a, I know we're in a pickle here, but what bums me out is that we can't give the applicant directions.
No, we probably can't at this point.
No, we cannot.
Because we don't have participa- this is Stephanie Copland speaking, because we don't have public participation or.
Because the commissioners are not present.
The commissioners are not fully present.
Oh, we need all. Present, not just a quorum, I see.
Well, it'd be nice to have the ones that we started with today.
Of course.
Right. So that's, that's my.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? If we continue this to the May 26th meeting, will we go through public comment again?
No.
Okay.
No. No. Unless I reopen it. Just kidding.
Well.
I, I, I would say that we.
That you closed public comment right before that happened. I mean, that's.
But I thi- I think we need to have a discussion about that.
Oh.
As, as well. No, no, I mean, I just say, just to confirm.
That's why I was, but they, someone, oh, Trent, I think you were not back. I wasn't sure whether they had, but, but you guys said that it was closed. I, I couldn't recall specifically.
I closed the public comment portion, absolutely.
Marco, Marco, if it's okay, I would move that we continue this planning item, whatever, what's the number?
Oh, four, twenty?
Planning item oh, four, twenty until, until our regularly scheduled meeting on May 26th.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. Now, when we, well, we, we gotta go through, I, I'll call for the question, but you guys have to state your name and yea or nay. So. I'll call for the question.
Sumner Schacter, yay.
Well, I, isn't Catherine, Catherine's here.
Catherine can do it, and Marco, you're the only, you're the only one we can't see.
That's, that's correct.
So I.
And I, I don't know if you see me.
Separately?
Yes, I have no internet. I've, I barely have a phone line.
Well, this is separately in favor of continuance.
Okay.
Also in favor of a continuance to the next scheduled meeting.
Doctor?
Yes.
Dem?
In favor.
Yes.
Do I call in everybody else, even though they're not? Are they in here? They're not here.
I think you see all on who's here.
Okay. There's still, even if we count the old quorum, there's still a majority. It's. Or we just count it as a new quorum.
Well, four of us said, yes, we continue. That's a quorum, isn't it?
Yes, it is a quorum.
Yes.
Right, and it's.
And it's unanimous.
Majority, right.
It's a quorum and it's unanimous.
Right, so. Thank you. This meeting, this hearing is continued till the end of the month.
We have to continue, we have to continue the next item, don't we?
Yes, thank you.
This particular application.
Yeah.
So I'll move through the next one. And.
Thank you all.
Planning. In planning item six, twenty, I entertain a motion to continue until the May twenty-sixth Regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
So moved.
And a second.
And a second. And is Catherine present? I guess so. I mean, yes, could you please, I called for the question.
Wilson?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
Separately?
Yes.
Dem?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. So we'll move that one. That one's been moved. And I, I think at this point, we can call it a night.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so, Marco.
You wanted to stay on the phone.
Tell me, how do you make your fettuccine Alfredo? I've always wanted to know.
Maybe it's actually start drinking on this.
I think I called for a reset. No.
Just a reminder, apparently, we're still live on YouTube, so.
Oh, shoot, reminder.
Be careful there, guys.
Special circumstance. Hey, I call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Night.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.